I'm going to call a meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Town Council Committee of the Whole. Role call, all members are present except Councilor Knoll and Councilor Perezati. Councilor Grim is here, he's just at the Jefferson residence. Calendar and communications? Anybody have any calendar and communications? Great. Approval of the minutes?
Wow. Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of all of these minutes listed in our agenda. There's a whole bunch of them.
Second. We have a motion by Councilor Watson, the second by Councilor De La Cruz to move the minutes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, that passes six to zero to zero. We have a lot of people filing in right now. I know there's a lot of people who are outside and it is, I'll just let people know, it's a pretty, pretty big agenda, a lot of things going on, so it could go on for quite some time. I'm going to try to keep to the order that we have it enlisted on the agenda. So the first order of business is the Ledgely Light Health District Community Health Assessment. Good evening.
Good evening, Aaron. First, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Steve Mansfield. I'm Director of Health for Ledgely Light Health District. Tonight, I'm joined by my colleague Russ Melmet. He's our epidemiologist and the supervisor of our Health Education and Promotion Program. I gave all of the councilors one pager here. If you take a look, it's titled "Basic Health Programs." And it's just a brief reminder of some of the things that guide the work that Ledgely Light Health District and every health department and district in the state of Connecticut are required to do. You may be very familiar with some of these items. For instance, number six, enforcing laws and regulations that protect health and ensure safety. That's as simple as inspecting restaurants, subsurface sewage disposal systems, wells, and so forth. And that's what a lot of people think of the health department when they think of health departments. What we're going to talk about tonight is something that goes much deeper into the public health realm than I think a lot of people are used to. If you look at this health, basic health program sheet, items four and five talk about mobilizing community partnerships, calls to action, developing policies and plans that support individual and community health efforts. What Russ is going to talk to all about tonight is our, well, two things, our well-being survey and some of the data that came out of that well-being survey and how that will, that information will feed into our community health assessment, eventually working toward our strategic plan at Ledgely Light Health District. So I know you do have a full agenda. I'll turn it right over to Russ.
Thank you.
Please feel free to jump in with any questions as you have them.
Thanks, Steve. I'll try to keep my remarks to under an hour. So I just want to highlight that this community health assessment has been a partnership with Lawrence Memorial Hospital, and it's been a true partnership in every sense. We've both contributed human resources, financing, facilities, time, effort. It's been a wonderful partnership, so I think we're very lucky to have that hospital so close to this community. The goal of the assessment is really just to answer some questions. I fear that it's going to end up creating more questions than it answers, but really the goal is to answer some questions like, are there health or well-being or social issues in the town? How do they compare to benchmarks, you know, to the state, to the county, to the United States? Are those differences important? Sometimes you see big differences, but are they really important? Sometimes you don't see any differences, but they are important. And what are those things associated with? What are these health issues, these well-being issues associated with? Are they associated closely with different geographies or education, income, age, or gender, these things that we love to talk about in public health all the time? Our health assessment is going to cover all these different topics, social determinants, infectious disease, the whole list. I'm going to touch on a few of these things tonight, not all of them, because we really would be here for a long time. And the geographies, you're going to, some you're going to hear about tonight and what the report will focus on ultimately is the Connecticut State as a whole, New London County, what we're calling Greater New London, which is really just the L&amp;M Hospital service area, which runs from the Limes to the Stonetons and including Monville and Ledger. Ledgely Light Health District area and towns, individual towns, zip codes, and sometimes even census tracts. Sometimes the data we look at comes down to a very small geography. These are all the data sources we pulled from and more. These are the major ones. I'll focus mostly tonight on our 2015 well-being survey, and that was done in partnership with Data Haven and Siena College. And it, we did get a representative sample of residents of Groton in addition to other towns in Ledgely Light Health District and the L&amp;M service area as a whole. And that survey touched on a lot of different subjects, civic involvement, classic health outcomes, chronic disease, transportation, housing, economic security, lots of different things, and I'll touch on a lot of those tonight. So I just want to, kind of want to get in some data, because an epidemiologist is just what I love to talk about. So in the survey, generally, you know, we're interested in what, how people characterize their overall health, you know, how do people feel about their overall health? This is the percentage of people who said their overall health was very good or excellent. What you'll see in all these slides, the orange bar is either Groton in most cases, or sometimes it's Ledgely Light Health District, and the green bar is Connecticut. So Groton compares favorably to the state slightly better. Then those next three are very good or excellent health by education, increasing levels of education, and the far right is by income, less than $75,000 a year, more than 75. You can see that people feel better about their health as education increases. This is something we see all the time. Education is more strongly associated with every health outcome than perhaps anything else, except smoking. And even that's associated with education. So really, education is very closely linked with health. And so is income. So if you earn less or you're less well-educated, you're less healthy. And this is all Groton data. As a place to live, do people think their town is getting better? This is Groton. So about one quarter of everybody in Groton said that their town was getting better. It compares reasonably well to the state, state slightly better, but I wouldn't call that an important difference. But if you look at the difference by age, so if you're younger, you felt better about the town's future, that it's getting much better. And if you were 50-plus, you were less likely to say that you felt the town was getting much better. Find that kind of interesting. I'm not sure what's going on there, but you see some of these things vary by age and income. Sometimes they make sense, sometimes I can't put my head around it.
How old are you?
Forty. So I'm like, I'm sort of going to be straddling that line not too long enough. So it makes sense to you, is that what you're saying?
Makes sense.
Makes sense, okay. So you don't think the town is getting that much better, but if you were much younger...
No, I know the difference, I can understand the difference between the age groups.
Yeah, okay. We should come to our improvement planning then, because we need some insight.
I'll feel better.
Dean's only 25.
Oh, okay, forget it, we've got plenty. So we asked people if they had good access to recreational facilities in their neighborhood. So this is a little bit busy. Connecticut's on the left, 71 percent of people in Connecticut said that they did feel like they had good access to recreation facilities. I highlighted Groton in the orange because it stood out across all the towns that we looked at in Ledgely Light Health District. Better than the state, better than the county, better than the Greater New London area, best overall, 83 percent. So good job with bringing access to recreational facilities to your residents. And they also feel pretty good about the condition of those facilities. So we asked people if they feel like the condition of those facilities is good or excellent. Groton again stands out, 81 percent said they thought the conditions of parks and recreational facilities was good or excellent. It does vary by income though, so if you were less well-educated, you didn't feel as great about the parks in your area. Here's one, so this you can think of as a referendum on the job you're doing, right? Government responsiveness to the needs of residents, characterized as good or excellent. So Groton in the orange, 44 percent compares favorably to the state. It does vary by education, so people with the highest level of education felt like government was more responsive to their needs. So this does make sense to me, right? It shouldn't actually be that way, right? So government should be responsive, and it probably is, but this is a perception issue, right? People perceive the government is more responsive if they're more well-educated. Maybe they know about the political process better, they're more involved, I'm not sure. People in Groton feel that the job done by police to keep residents safe is great, right? 84 percent, way better than the state as a whole. Moving to employment, what I'll call real unemployment, so this is people who say they were unemployed but desire work, they're actually looking for jobs. Groton, 7 percent compared to the state at 5 percent, but people with a high school degree or less, 16 percent unemployment in the town of Groton. And what I think is a little bit more troubling is that of those people who said they were out of work but looking for work, 46 percent in the town of Groton were long-term unemployed. They've been unemployed for two or more years. And we hear about this nationally, I mean, this is kind of a problem since the Great Recession, right, long-term unemployment, so it's a problem here as well. Food insecurity in the town of Groton compares favorably to the state. About 12 percent of people said that in the last 12 months, they couldn't afford to buy food for their family, same as the state. When you look at it by education, more than one in four residents of Groton with a high school degree or less were food insecure sometime in the last 12 months. And of those folks, 33 percent said that that happened every month. Every month, they couldn't afford to buy food for their families. I put the next slide up, which is people who said who are overweight or obese in the town of Groton, by all these different categories. This is not meant to confuse you or anything like that. It just essentially doesn't matter if you're male or female, young or old, college educated, rich or not. There's a problem with being overweight and obese in the town of Groton, just like there's everywhere else. What I find really interesting, and why I put these two things, food insecurity and obesity, next to each other, is we seem to have these unnatural and inexplicable co-epidemics, I'll call them, of food insecurity and obesity, right? So that red bar is people who are high school educated or less, 72 percent overweight or obese. But they're also the people who are most likely to report being food insecure. So this is something about the food system, not just in Groton but everywhere, where we have a problem with obesity, but also a problem with people being able to afford food. Some classic health outcomes here, high blood pressure in Groton, about 30 percent of residents said they were diagnosed with high blood pressure, comparable to the state. Also decreases with increasing education. So the more well-educated you are, the less likely you are to be hypertensive. Diabetes and blood sugar, so Groton compares favorably to the state. Those first bars, orange bar and the green bar, the graph on the right, 6 percent of residents in Groton are diagnosed with diabetes. But when it comes to monitoring diabetes with the hemoglobin A1C test, which is a measure of long-term blood sugar stability, fully one-fourth of Groton residents diagnosed with diabetes have not had one of these tests done in the last 12 months, which is a problem. This is something that we can work on. So what happens when you have diabetes, and sometimes diabetes out of control? Graph on the left, eventually you die of cardiovascular disease. Diabetes and cardiovascular disease are closely linked. So what we see here, the two orange bars are Connecticut from two five-year periods, 2001 to 2005, 2006, 2010, and then Ledgely Light Health District, same periods. So we do see decreasing cardiovascular disease mortality. But we are doing slightly worse in this area than compared to the state as a whole. So the number one killer in the country is cardiovascular disease, right? Secondary to cancer. And then, but, you know, we're doing slightly better, but we could do even better. Graph on the right, people who said they had a heart attack or heart disease in Groton, 8 percent in Groton compared to 5 percent in the state of Connecticut. Again, if you were less well-educated, you were far more likely to report having had a heart attack or heart disease.
Excuse me, Russ?
Yeah.
How big was the survey? Like, how many people were...
So the survey in the entire state was about 16,000 people. In Ledgely Light Health District, we surveyed 1,000 people, and in Groton, we surveyed 250 residents. So when you have rare outcomes, things where people say only 1 or 2 percent or 3 percent said they had this condition, those numbers tend to vary quite a bit when you have small sample size. But 250 is actually a pretty considerable sample size for a survey. It is representative, and I can show you that if you want.
Yeah. No, I believe you. I think, I mean, 250 to 40,000, it sounds like it's, it wouldn't be, it'd be less than 1 percent, right?
It's, yeah, maybe one half of 1 percent, something like that. So I should say that the survey is weighted. So what we did was we looked at the demographics of the respondents and adjusted the responses, or the response rates essentially, to weight them so that they were more closely resembled the demographics of the town. So if there were slightly more older people than actually lived up in the town, those responses were weighted less heavily.
Was it done by phone or by written or by...
Yes, by phone, so about 70 percent landline, 30 percent cellphone, nights and evenings, and weekends as well. So we asked people if they have access to a car when they need it. 90 percent of Groton residents said they did. That's great, right? It's actually better than the state, 85. Does vary by education. If you're less well-educated, you're less likely to say you got a car when you need it. Why is that important? So we also asked people if they ever had to stay home because they didn't get somewhere. They had to go somewhere and they couldn't get somewhere. If you were less well-educated, roughly 1 in 5 of those people said that at some point in the last 12 months, they had to get somewhere and they couldn't. So why is that important, right? So we asked people if there was ever a time where they delayed or didn't get the medical care they needed, at any time in the past 12 months. If you were less well-educated, you were twice as likely to report not getting the medical care you needed in the last 12 months. Some of that has to do with access, right? Don't have access to transportation, you can't get to the doctor's appointment in time, can't make last-minute appointments. Now can we do anything about cars for people? Probably not, but there are some things that we can talk about with transportation infrastructure that can alleviate some of this. Getting back to some more classic health, smoking prevalence in the town of Groton. 24 percent of Groton residents said they smoked compared to 15 percent of the state. More males than females, more younger people than older people, and more, less well-educated than well-educated. So if you're male, young, and have a high school degree or less, you're far more likely to smoke. And we all know the kinds of health outcomes that occur as a result of smoking. Single largest preventable cause of death in this country, smoking. Tick-borne diseases. So we mapped tick-borne diseases in all of Ledgely Light Health District. The darker, the red or orange in these census tracts, the more likely, the higher the rate of tick-borne disease, not just Lyme disease, babesiosis and ehrlichiosis. Groton compares favorably to some of the other census tracts in Ledgely Light Health District. You can see Watford in particular has a couple of hotspots here that we need to address. And this is not atypical. So when you have an urban center, an urban core, for example, is in the city of Groton, you're less likely to have lots of deer, less likely to have lots of ticks and tick habitat, you're less likely to get tick-borne diseases. Doesn't mean that people here in Groton don't get tick-borne diseases. Compared to the rest of the country, we in Connecticut are not in good shape with tick-borne diseases. This is really just comparing all the census tracts in Ledgely Light Health District to try to find the hotspots, and the hottest spots are in East Lime and Watford. We have some of the worst asthma rates in the country here in Connecticut, so we looked at asthma in Groton. So we have less of a problem with asthma in Groton than the rest of the state. 9 percent of residents, adult residents, said they had asthma compared to 13 percent for the state. But when we asked people how well-controlled their asthma was, in other words, did they have no asthma attacks in the last 30 days? Of people who said they had asthma, well-controlled asthma was less, less common in Groton than the rest of the state. 54 percent of residents in Groton who have asthma reported never having an asthma attack. So about 50 percent said they did. So asthma is really controlled, right? There's probably people sitting up there that have asthma. You take an inhaled steroid, you can control your asthma symptoms usually very well. This is something we can address. And here's a statewide map of when you don't have well-controlled asthma, you end up in the emergency room and being hospitalized for asthma outcomes. So you can see Groton, sort of the little area over there, right, Groton and New London, some of the highest rates in Southeast Connecticut and around New Haven and Hartford of hospitalizations for asthma. That should almost never happen, right? Asthma should be well-controlled at home, you should never have to be hospitalized for Graph on the left and the graph on the right. Graph on the left is ED non-admissions for opioid abuse and dependence. Graph on the right is inpatient discharges. So showed up in the ED, you end up in the graph on the left. You end up hospitalized, you're in the graph on the right. From 2009, 2014, both ED admissions and hospitalization discharges more than doubled in our district in five years. More than doubled. This is a nationwide problem, but we know we have this problem in Southeast Connecticut. And it's not getting better, it's getting worse. So according to CIRAC, which is the Southeast Regional Action Council, there is some good news when it comes to substance abuse in our youth anyway. Lifetime and recent use of drugs is on par or lower than the rest of the country. Use of alcohol and tobacco has decreased, and the perception of harm for both of those substances has increased. So when kids think things are harmful, they're less likely to do them. When they think alcohol and cigarettes are harmful, they don't smoke or drink. So those things are coming down because perception of harm is going up. The bad news, 13 percent of youth report using a prescription medication to get high. That's a little scary. And the perception of harm of marijuana has decreased. So kids are thinking that pot is not harmful anymore. I'll give you two reasons. All the conversation about pot as medicine and the conversation about legalizing pot. That information is out there and it's out there in droves, and so kids think, that's not harmful. But I will say, we can look to tobacco as getting towards a victory. Kids now think tobacco is harmful, kids don't smoke anymore. You have seen the data. So if we can get kids to understand that pot is harmful, they won't use it. Usually, we like to see mortality statistics for all causes going down. So here you've got Connecticut on the left, Ledgely Light Health District on the right, the two time periods. This is accidental poisoning, which includes drug and alcohol overdoses. Mortality from these things are going up, not down. So for most causes of death, we see mortality coming down. For accidental poisonings, which includes drugs, they're going up. Infant mortality in Ledgely Light Health District versus Connecticut. So this is infant mortality is like that, that statistic that governments love to point to, to say, we're a really healthy country. I don't know if you know this, but in this country, infant mortality is kind of a national embarrassment, right? It's not very good, despite all we spend on medical care. In Ledgely Light Health District, Connecticut infant mortality is coming down steadily from 2008, 2013, and Ledgely Light Health District is more variable. And from 2012, 2013, we saw a huge jump. So what that means relative to Connecticut, 4.7 deaths per 1,000 live births compared to 7.2 in Ledgely Light Health District. That puts Ledgely Light Health District on par with Lebanon, Malaysia, Kuwait, and Chile for infant mortality. I don't want to make any blanket statements about those countries, I'm just using them as a reference. So that's it for the data I'm going to touch on tonight. We've got a lot of other information that I'd love to share with you, and I just didn't want to be here for two hours, and I'm sure you don't want to listen to me speak for two hours. We did some focus groups and we had some key informant interviews. We also had a big partner forum where we invited representatives from social service agencies, municipal, all the municipal departments. We had John Reiner there to talk about what the problems are in the community that we can try to solve. We've got next steps. We're going to release our full report for the entire jurisdiction, and we will also release individual town profiles, one for Groton, one for London, Ledger, East Lime, Watford. We're having a prioritization event, so we collected all this data. We want to talk about what can we realistically work on as a community. That event's happening on May 18th, between 10:30 and 1:30 at Philomena's Restaurant in Watford. Would love to have Town Council representation there, would love it. So if any of you can make it, just email me, I'll leave you my card. After we prioritize what it is that we want to work on, what it is that is feasible to work on, we're going to come up with an improvement plan for the community's health. And once we do that, we're going to have to talk about an agency's strategic plan. So what does Ledgely Light Health District, how do we need to adjust to meet the needs of a community? From a workforce development perspective, structural issues within our agency, what do we need to do to respond better? So those are our next steps. And I'll invite any questions, I know you've got a full agenda, but I'll invite any questions or discussion.
Russ, thank you. Councilors, do you guys have any questions? Councilor Delphus?
I just want to thank you for the great work. I see you have all these events that I've been going to, and you show up and you speak out from Groton. I do want to ask, because it is Ledgely Light District, and we've been going to all these roundtable discussions with senators and mayors, and, but nobody has been able to say yet that we can call Percocet heroin one and then turn OxyContin into heroin two, because it is what it is. We know that, it's 20 years in the making. Could we be, could Ledgely Light impose that on the pharmacies that are in our districts? It seems like it can't be done politically. It's impossible. It's something that can't happen. We've been screaming from the rooftop, but every person that we meet and deal with with addiction had no idea that OxyContin or Percocet was heroin. They had absolutely no clue, and I think that's a disservice to the public. And we have parents that call me screaming and yelling, when is that going to change? When's that going to happen? So there's an undercurrent, but is that something we can direct through you? Because to me, that would, what change could we make? That would be the number one change that would help our community, letting people know exactly what that drug is. And I think, for whatever reason, politically it can't be done, but maybe it can be done on an enforcement side, if that's a possibility.
I'm speaking generally here. I think something of that magnitude generally starts much higher up than the local level. There are a lot of small health departments in the state of Connecticut, and I don't know, that's the honest answer. I know we have the ability to promulgate regulations, but specifically, drug-related regulations, I don't think it's something that can be done at the local level. Generally, those things are done at the state level.
I think some of the best things come from the local level sometimes, and it doesn't seem like it gets done in Congress. I mean, if they're fighting for that in Washington, I think if one small, small district stepped up and started the conversation, maybe by stating that, or at least letting us put warnings aside those drugs. I mean, if you, the more people we meet, and we meet people every day, five last weekend for our group, five, new calls, new people that live in Groton, and each one of them did not know when I told the parents that it was the same exact thing, they had no clue and no idea. It's, I think, that, that should be the warning, that it's heroin. And I think we could do that, and maybe, and I don't know how to do it. I was trying to do it through the council, or trying to do it through, even at the state level, but it doesn't seem like it can get done possibly. It just, it seems like it's too big of a mountain to change the aim or something. But if you can do it, just food for thought. Immediate, immediate help right away, solve a lot of issues.
Just not speaking from a regulatory perspective, but the coalitions that are working to prevent substance abuse in Groton and in a few other towns are attempting to work with some of the pharmacies to put extra information into the packages with those drugs when they are, when those prescriptions are filled. That works better with individually operated pharmacies than it does with the big chains. The answer we tend to get is, we'd love to do that, but it needs to go through corporate.
Yeah.
But we are making efforts to at least try to get the word out in some way, in some systematic way, that those drugs are dangerous, more dangerous than what you might read on the package that says it may cause drowsiness, you know?
But whatever corporate decision it is, it's still selling in our district, in our town, so we should have a say in what, in what it says, and what, and the honesty and integrity of the labeling, because it's just, it's false. I think people are being wooed to sleep, thinking that it's, you know, like, again, I thought it was no big deal before I got involved three years ago, and now I know that it's the number one problem in our country. So it'd be nice, and no one else has been able to answer. I'm not putting you on the grill, because we've asked senators and congressmen, and we've been talking to a lot of people, and absolutely nobody has the gall to do it, I guess. I guess that's what we'd say.
I couldn't agree with you more, and my advice is to not stop asking.
Thank you for all, thank you for everything you have done, because you guys really have pushed the issue. I really appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Welcome.
Thank you very much for your time, and I encourage you to go to our website and look at Ledgely Light Health District and all of the other things that we do on the list that I gave you. This is one small part of one category on the list, so, and feel free to give us a call anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is tax incentive agreement for Branford Manor, and I believe Related Affordable is here?
Yes.
And we want to invite the city representatives from the city who are here, they'd like to come up to the table as well.
I believe there are a few folks in the Housing Authority.
Okay. Is there people from the Housing Authority as well? Mark, I think everybody from the city is out, out...
Did you say the Housing Authority?
Yes, yes, Housing Authority, please come up, yep.
Well, you know what, Mayor? When you have...
Can I have one of those back?
Diane?
Thank you.
Mayor? At 7:30, it's going to run down the street in both for my fire button right there. I don't know, I guess we're going to be here.
Oh, yeah, we're going to be here.
I'll get you a coffee.
Welcome, Mayor and city councilors.
Mayor, at 7:30, it's going to run down the street in both for my firework. I don't know. I guess we're going to be here.
Oh, yeah, we're going to be here.
I'll get you a coffee.
Welcome, Mayor and City Councillors.
Thank you, Mayor.
So I'll hand it over to you, you gentlemen, if you'd like.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jeff Godley, local councillor for Related Affordable. With me here tonight is Matt Finkel, President of Related, and David Pearson and Ted Lubitz. Tonight, we'd like to give you an overview of the project and then give you an opportunity to ask any questions regarding the project and also some advice or information regarding the statutory authority for the agreement that we're seeking.
Great. Thank you again. Happy to be here. Again, my name is Matt Finkel. I am the President of Related Affordable, which is the property, excuse me, the company that's under contract currently to purchase Branford Manor. A little bit about who we are and why we think we're a good purchaser for the property. Related Affordable is a company that focuses entirely on the acquisition, rehabilitation, and preservation of properties like Branford Manor, which is a project-based Section 8 asset. Over the past almost 42 years, we've compiled a portfolio that now exceeds about 32,000 units of similar real estate across the country with concentrations in the Northeast, the Southeast, the Midwest, and the West Coast. We also have our own captive management company, which would be brought in to run the property hand-in-hand with us. At the same time, we're planning to undertake a robust rehabilitation and preservation of the property that my colleagues Dave and Ted will describe in more detail. But suffice it to say, it involves a dramatic change in what the property looks like from today and also things that we can provide to the residents that will help their lives as well. So we're really excited about moving forward with the purchase. We've been under contract for about 45 days now and are expecting to close in the next few months. And with that, Dave Pearson, Senior Vice President, can talk a little bit more about the deal itself and what we plan to do with the property.
Good evening. Appreciate everybody coming together this evening to discuss, I think, a very important project. I think most folks here are familiar with Branford Manor. But it is 442 units on a very large site. It's 47 existing townhome buildings spread over 37 acres. So it, you know, takes a large footprint of the city and the town. And we think is a nice property, but really in need of a substantial renovation, which we're planning to undertake. And also, the affordability that protects the existing residents is set to expire at the end of this year. So as Matt said, the property was publicly marketed. And we came to the table with a very strong proposal that contemplated undertaking a preservation of the affordability of the project. And this is what our mission is as owners. And we seek to be long-term owners and be part of the community and really not only improve the lives of the existing residents and future residents for the property, but also, you know, work with the local stakeholders to make sure that we're helping to integrate the property into the surrounding community as best as possible. So I want to take just a few minutes, if you have the handout in front of you. The first couple pages sort of talk about Related Affordable, as Matt just described. And then a little bit about the property, a handful of photos of what the existing property looks like. And you can see that, you know, it could use a little bit of work. And so what we're contemplating is a renovation exceeding $18.5 million, which is on a per-unit basis, over $42,000 per unit. And we, it's really pretty robust. We, though we don't, you know, go in and knock the buildings down or take them down to the studs, we really, from an interior unit perspective, really improve the units with all-new kitchens and bathrooms and lighting, upgrade the floors, and implement a lot of energy efficiency upgrades throughout, not only including the windows, insulation, all of the appliances. All of the water features will be low-flow and energy-efficient. So that's always a big part of what Related does as part of renovations. And so that'll be a big component here. In addition to what we're planning to do on the unit interiors, I think one of the most significant aspects will be what we're planning to do aesthetically to the property. So we really are going to undertake a large improvement to the curb appeal with all-new siding, bringing in some architectural features so that the buildings look a little bit nicer in the community. And also, we'll be able to weather, you know, long-term and continue to look nice for years to come. There'll be significant landscaping improvements, a lot of work that is designed to make sure that the property has a long useful life. So we'll be going in and replacing all the major building systems, including the roofs and the mechanical systems, the windows, as I mentioned. Also, really focusing on things to make sure that it's a safe and secure place for the residents to live. So new lighting, upgrading the technology with the security monitoring system so that we can make sure that we deter and also capture anything that potentially occurs there. And one, I think, the things that we're most excited about is trying to bring a new resident services building onto the property. So we've identified a space within the property where we could construct a new facility that will be available for the use of the residents. I think most notably for the children to have some after-school programming and activities. Also bringing in a fitness center so that we can improve the health of the residents and a new management office. So it's a very robust scope. It really touches on all aspects of the property. And like I said, it's a pretty large number of almost $42,000 per unit. So I'll sort of talk a little bit about what it takes to get there. As Matt said, we've been under contract for about 45 days, working on developing the plan. And our financing structure involves getting an allocation of tax-exempt bonds, which we've been in discussions with the Town of Groton Housing Authority for a conduit issuance of bonds, where we, they request an allocation of bonds through the state volume cap. We bring to the table a Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac lending partner who will ultimately finance those bonds. And they're the ones taking all of the real estate risk, all of the credit risk associated with those tax-exempt bonds. The Housing Authority would be strictly a conduit issuer and would have no liability. And when we are able to get those tax-exempt bonds, we're also able to work with Connecticut Housing in order to get an allocation of tax credits. And so we're able to raise over $25 million in tax credit equity, working in this public-private partnership with the state agency and a private investment to buy the tax credits. And we're able to use those resources and able to undertake this renovation that we've discussed. The, so that's one of the key components is the issuance of the bonds. The other really critical component is one of the things that we're here to talk about today, which is being able to have some certainty around the real estate taxes. So what we are proposing is a tax stabilization plan where we look at the current taxes that are being paid to the town and to the city and set that as a fixed amount. And set forth through a tax incentive agreement, a schedule of the real estate taxes to be paid to each party over the next 30 years. So that both the town and the city have a certainty of the amount of real estate taxes that they'll be collecting from the property. And also, we'll be able to have some certainty in our underwriting with our lending partner so that they'll be able to generate the appropriate loan proceeds to allow us to undertake this plan that we've set forth. So it's a really critical component. Our goal is to not come to you today and ask for any sort of decrease in the real estate taxes. We want, we've structured it so that we can continue to pay what the property has been paying and set forth some increases over time so that we can really structure this property to continue to really benefit these residents for the long term. We've sort of set forth some representative pictures of a community room we recently built on a similar-sized Section 8 property down in Pensacola, New Jersey, which you would see on page five if you flipped to it. And this is similar to what we're envisioning. It'll obviously fit in with the, be designed to fit in with the property. But these are the type of improvements we try to bring to the table when we undertake these renovations. And then the one below is a tough little property in Newark, New Jersey, where we were able, through some siding and some architectural design, to really change, you know, what the property looked like from the curb. And I think, driving through Branford Manor, as we did on our way over here this evening, there's a tremendous opportunity with the property to really improve how it looks from the curb and really bring some, you know, really bring some great improvements there. So I will sort of pause there. Throughout the rest of the package that we've presented, it sets forth a little bit more details about the tax stabilization plan, as I mentioned, including the schedule that we are proposing for the taxes over the next 30 years. Talks about the statutory authority under which the town would be able to enter into this tax incentive agreement. The property is in an enterprise zone. And so we'd be seeking under the general statute 32-71E for the Enterprise Zone Act, which we think gives the town the ability to enter into this agreement. So that's, I think that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you. That was nice and brief. Open it up to the councillors for discussion. Councillor De La Cruz?
Yeah, a couple of questions. I see, when you did the renovations, I know currently they don't have laundry facilities inside. Is that something that you bring to the, is that something that would happen?
Yeah, go ahead.
There will be laundry facility within the property, but not within the units.
Not in each individual unit?
Not in individual units. The part of the plan with the new building is to implement a laundry facility.
So it'd be like a coin-operated type thing in the meeting building? Is there a reason why they, I know a lot of public housing doesn't, but it is a pretty huge financial burden for someone who doesn't have a car or, you know, they're getting laundry or maybe they're carrying it to the place. But it just seems like it would make sense and it would be a cost savings for the people. But maybe there's something to it.
Yeah, it can be an engineering challenge sometimes if the piping is not set up to handle that kind of volume. Because if you can imagine suddenly having 442 washing machines in that sort of location, it can overwhelm sometimes the piping system or even the sewer system near there. So we can certainly analyze it, but invariably, that becomes an issue. So we try to provide something that's reasonably accessible to the residents at a discounted cost or fair cost.
Grow up in a place like that, it's just, it's a pain to go in.
Sure, sure.
It just, it is not easy.
What was my other question?
Oh, now, how do you go about the renovations right away? Do people, you have empty, and then you renovate that and then move people around and kind of shuffle them there?
It's actually, it's pretty exciting. Maybe not if you're a resident there, it can seem a little overwhelming. But we do it with all the residents in place, actually. Unless we come up with, against some environmental issues, which is pretty uncommon. So the way that an apartment is renovated is that we try to enter an apartment, say, three or maybe four times to do different aspects during the day. And during that period, hopefully, the resident is either at work or if they're not at work, we provide a location on-site for the resident to stay during the day. And that would be either a couple vacant units that we would set up as a lounge, where they could, you know, have their lunch, watch TV, read a book, you know, do whatever. But at the end of any given day, the unit is habitable and they can return. So if they're in the middle of the period with their units being renovated, when they go home one night, they may not have cabinets for that night, but all of their things will be provided for in bins that our team would help them put in for that one night. So is it an inconvenience? It is. And we communicate that very clearly with the residents. But our management company and our construction people are highly skilled at making sure that this dance that sort of happens throughout the property is well-communicated and well-executed.
You have a website set up where you maybe, I know there's going to be bad reviews, but I'm sure there's a lot of people that say it went well. But there's always the people that say it was the worst experience.
It is. And I'm always very upfront about it. We have a big resident meeting before we start the renovation. And we show them pictures of what it's going to look like. And then we do a sample unit. And we encourage people to walk into that unit. And then we say, that's all the good stuff. Now, here comes all the bad stuff. It's going to be dusty. People are going to be traipsing through. But just bear with us, work with us. We're going to provide alternative places for you to spend time. We will do whatever we can to minimize the impact on you and your family. But when it's all over and we have the big ribbon cutting and we have the big party, you're going to love how the place looks. But yeah, I'm not, you know, absolutely right. Some people say it was a tough experience.
Do they actually have the ability to say no, saying somebody was not feeling well? Is there a clause where they just say, I can't do it?
Absolutely, absolutely. We, what we do is we lay out a schedule, we communicate with the residents, we give them as short of a window as possible when we plan to go into their unit. But if that morning someone gets up and they've got a stomach ache or they're home with a child, we will not force our way in, of course not. We would reschedule that to a later time. And a project of this size, which the renovations will probably take nine to 12 months, it's all about sequencing and dealing with issues like that. Because, of course, they come up every year.
And my last one. Down at the back, there's actually water access to this property. I always thought they could have like a place to book kayaks and stuff.
Huh, that's interesting.
I mean, I don't even know if they own, if that's even part of that property. But it just seems like, I know that's part of a park. I don't know if it goes all the way behind, but if there was a trail or something. I just think it'd be a neat, something neat.
That's certainly worth looking into. We haven't thought about that. But that's an interesting idea. It could be another amenity.
That's it for me.
Councillor De La Cruz?
The question that naturally arises, other than Councillor De La Cruz, is if one were to map out the proposed payments, we know what those are. They're in the schedule. It's essentially based on what, it's a little over. It's rounding up what the town, the taxes you pay to the town, the taxes you pay to the city. So again, rounding up $230,000 to the town, that's the latest figure. It's a little less than that. Same thing with the city, $65,000. I think the town, the city's figure's a little less than that. And so you're proposing to have that frozen for 10 years and then thereafter, each figure goes up by 3% annually, out to 30 years. It's a long way to go. And that's fixed. What I don't know is what kind of a deal that represents. Obviously, what we'd be, what we're asking, what we're being asked to do is to sacrifice something. Usually, when we have something like this, we're being asked to sacrifice something in the short term for a long-term gain. The improvement in a property is supposed to translate into greater value, better for the developer, better for us. We can tax it at a higher rate, we grow the grant list, et cetera. I don't know that I've ever seen, Harry, you've been here the longest. I don't know that I've ever seen something that goes out to 30 years. And I'm thinking, in 30 years, your successors will come and say, we need a break. Because these things are 30 years old and we need to do this all over again. When will we ever, I mean, I don't know to what degree the property will actually improve in value. I do not doubt that work needs to be done, capital needs to be invested, and this is the way to do it. I, for example, I wouldn't have any way of renovating any of these things. This is the stuff that you folks do, so God bless. But are we expected, is part of the pitch, so to speak, that we will not only have an improvement, but that this will maintain or maybe increase in value over time? We'll have the jewel plus? Is that part of the story here? Or is this just, this has got to be renovated? We're not looking at an increase in value. We're looking at maintaining the value of what's there with an infusion of this capital?
Complicated question. I would think that long-term value in real estate is really determined by a I would think that long-term value in real estate is really determined by a lot of different things, right? It's determined by economic conditions, it's determined by socio-economic conditions, it's determined by what the Federal Reserve chooses to do on any given quarterly meeting. However, I would say that as a long-term owner of a property, and we have properties in our portfolio that we've owned since nineteen seventy-two, I wasn't with the company then, I was alive then, but I wasn't with the company then, but our founder still, who founded this, this company that we're a part of, and his involvement in many different things, is, is a long-term owner of affordable housing. And those of us who succeed in this business, we succeed because we take care of our properties and that we build long-term value, and we don't add too much leverage, and we don't make stupid decisions with how we invest our capital into the property. So our goal is, yes, to have a property in ten, fifteen, thirty years, that, that is valuable, but whether or not that comes to fruition, we'll do everything we can, but it's, it's hard to say what the exogenous factors around us will do relative to the economy and interest rates and, and other things.
The only way that I could compare, and again, your numbers are solid, so I had to sort of make up scenarios, and these are overly simplistic and do not take into account necessarily what's going to happen, which is that the dollar will change in value, usually historically. The dollar becomes less over time, same thing with the mark and everything. But I've got three scenarios that presume an average increase in taxes, assuming the property stays at the same value, holds its value for thirty years. A scenario, you know, of two and a half percent on average, you know, increase in taxes every year, assuming the same value of the property, one at four percent, one at the Armageddon of seven percent every year for, you know, for thirty years.
That sounds like Chicago, by the way.
Yeah. We're trying, we're doing our best here. I can't promise for thirty years, though. But under Scenario One, where you have an average of, of two and a half percent, and again, this is not, there's no time value at scrot, I didn't have the time or the wit, to be honest, to tackle this without pulling my hair out, what's left of it. But if I, if I measure your scale versus that scale, we would have collected, the town, for example, would have collected ten million dollars, whereas under yours it would be eight point six, so we would be giving up, so to speak, and again, without any adjustments over time, one point four million dollars. Between the town and the city, it would be more like one point eight million dollars under that scenario. Now, I recognize it's not one point eight present dollars, I'm comparing today's apples with apples from thirty years, no, no pun intended. That's the kind of thing that, this is, I'm trying to put this into some sort of a frameworks that I can understand, what concession are we making, what concession are you making? You're offering predictability, we're getting predictability, but are we giving up anything? Are we getting anything? I got to look at it that way.
Is there?
So did I miss, I'm sure I missed something, but?
No, I think, you know, I think the other component of this is, is the preservation of affordable housing, right? So if this was market-rate housing, then there's oftentimes, of course, depending on how the market is, you know, different, different value growth. What we're proposing here and seeking is in connection with preserving this as affordable housing. So, you know, you may be giving up some long-term value growth of the property because you're helping to keep it for the, for the residents that, that need it. So I think there is that, a little bit of a trade-off, but I, you know, I do agree that, you know, there are other, other schedules, and I do apologize, the total figures here at the bottom are a twenty-year total as opposed to a ten-year total, or excuse me, thirty-year total. So your number of eight point six is, is correct, the five billion here is not. And, you know, so I think there, there is certainly that trade-off, there's other schedules that could be run. I think that, you know, it has to be something that we're able to leverage, you know, be able to pull the financing resources together to have some predictability. And I think a seven percent per year increase far outpaces where any revenue growth on an annual basis would exceed, so I think that over time, the property, it could affect the property's viability. So I think, you know, that's, that's the balancing act.
The, the one thing I will say, too, is this eliminates any downside. If you see the historical taxes, we have a three-year number in there, but it went up and down, so you're protected on the downside, whereas we will be making that payment regardless of what happens to the values.
Right, and that begs me to my next question, I was, I had to read it a couple of times, and now that I read it again, after passing along a, a dark rumor, which I shouldn't have, the, the schedule is what you would pay, regardless of what we, in other words, if we, if we said, you know, in year thirteen, hey, you know, the taxes are two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars for the town, but the schedule comes to two hundred and fifty-one, three twenty-seven, the two fifty-one is what you pay, it's not a cap, it's what you pay.
Correct.
Your statement at the end of the paragraphs one and two just reinforces the notion you are not to pay any more than what it says in the schedule. That's it. So it's not a, not a cap of any sort.
No.
Okay, so you will pay what's in the schedule. Last question that I have, I'm sorry to belabor this. The, the transfer of any interest, this, this agreement, there's a provision in sixteen that says that this is not transferable. If you were to sell the property, you can't transfer this goodie with it. Whoever buys it from you doesn't get it, but an affiliate does. An affiliate does. An affiliate of the developer, controlled by or under common control by the developer, and of course, we have to give our consent, but our consent may not be reasonably withheld. Our reasonable, you know, request wouldn't, can't be withheld, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, all the boilerplate. There's that provision, and also the provision to deal with a lender. Lender having a security interest does have your right to substitute a successor owner. When a lot of people think lender, they think bank, it could be your own, you know, sort of your right hand and your left hand kind of thing. I don't, I don't have a particular concern about that, but if anybody, just so that it's, it's out there.
Sure.
It is possible, under, under certain circumstances, for you, in fact, to transfer this to another entity and call it an affiliate, or say it's our lender, it's our capital company, and, and effect a transfer that way. But I mean, if we were to agree to this, what do we care whether it's you or your successor, as long as the job gets done, we made a promise? This is the, I don't think we, we're looking for a, you know, you sell it in, aha, we get to break the, we get to break the schedule kind of thing. If we're in, we're in, if we're not, we're not. Okay. That's all, let's end the speech.
Yeah, obviously, well, Councilor Antipas understands a lot more, of course, he's an attorney, but he understands this a lot more than I do. I'm having a hard time getting my arms around the whole proposal. What I'd be curious to know is, is Mayor Galbraith or anybody from the City Council, the deputy mayor is here, too, you've had this presentation already, too? No, you haven't, I thought I read it here somewhere.
I've never heard a question related to this.
Okay, so you haven't had a time, because there's, there's financial ramifications in the city, too, not to the degree there is in the town. I'd just like to get a feel for how you feel, and I'd like to also get a feel for how the town manager feels, so I can try to understand this a little bit better. I could ask Mark to go first, Marion, so he can think a minute, or we could go the other way, but.
Now, I have questions I'd like to ask, which would inform how I would feel about it.
Well, maybe that, that's my way of recognizing and asking, I, I just need to try to understand this a bit more than I, than I actually do, so.
Do you want to go first, Mark, or do you want me to go first? Go ahead.
Okay, so I, I want to drill down on some of the things that Councilor Antipas asked. So you indicated that you would be paying the amount that's in the schedule even if the taxes went down, but in the agreement that you sent us, it said, in no event shall the property pay an amount higher than would otherwise be required without this tax incentive agreement. So if the taxes went down, you'd expect this to lower as well. Theoretically, next year's taxes were less than, theoretically, less than this year's taxes.
So I think this document was a black line for a deal that we had done in Bridgeport that I think is referenced in here, so I think that, that was in that agreement, but I think what we've proposed here, and what our thinking is, is that these would be fixed payments over the schedule, and they wouldn't be decreasing, or decreased in the event that there was a different assessed value or whatever. So you're right that the document does read that way right now, but that would be something that would be taken out.
Okay. I, I wanted to also drill down on, on the questions that the counselor was asking about the, the improved value to the property. So one of the ways of looking at improved value of the property is what you're spending your eighteen point five million dollars on. One of them is a new building, which would, would normally have, add value to the property. So is that building three thousand five hundred square feet in total, or is that the footprint?
So that's in total?
That's total.
Okay. So is it possible to get a breakdown on where you're spending the eighteen five? You've given us a list of things, but like what percentage of the eighteen five is on appliances and things like that, siding, or what proportion is, has to do with landscaping, which has no improvement value in terms of property taxes?
Sure.
So it's possible, it's possible to get that, that would be great.
Absolutely.
So one of the reasons that we give, or the town gives tax incentives usually is economic benefit. So you've, you've listed in the agreement what the beautification benefits are. What are the economic development benefits? There's no permanent jobs being added, correct?
Correct.
Are you hiring local people to do the construction work, or bringing your own people in?
It's to be decided. We always like to work with local people when the proper tradesmen are available in the area, so if that's a way for us to work with you more closely, for you to recommend said people, we'd be happy to, to, to talk about that and try to incorporate that into, into the plan.
But there's no guarantee in here of, of, of any economic benefit, it would...
Right.
What do you see as the economic benefits? I mean, that's usually what a tax incentive revolves around.
Sure, sure, so, so there's, there's obviously the purchase of a lot of materials that, you know, are going to be spent on the property, so siding, windows, roofing, that, of course, may or may not be purchased right here or potentially somewhere else. There's also, if there are jobs created during the construction period, so normally there's a need for people to help and assist during the construction, either if it's tradesmen who are local or other support people who help get the job done. And then, thirdly, if, you know, the residents are, are, are doing better and are doing other things and are improving their lives and are improving their jobs, there's sales taxes, there's all kinds of things that ultimately happen when a property is improved. Can I put a number on that specifically? No, no, I, I cannot.
The improvements that you're talking about, and correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as I can see from the improvements you're talking about, other than the new building, they, they don't outlive the time of the tax, the tax stabilization, so any appliance isn't probably going to last thirty years, the siding isn't going to last thirty years, the...
Right.
The roof isn't going to last thirty years, so they all would, okay, so?
Right, so like any, any property, we have a replacement reserve schedule that we set up, so when we close, we fund a replacement reserve that presumes that certain things have useful lives. So appliances, on average, need to be replaced every five to seven years, so forth and so on. So yes, all of those things will be replaced as they need to be through our, through our thirty-year ownership period.
One of the things that is prominent in the agreement is the commitment to spend eighteen point five million dollars. Is that a commitment that you're making to us, or is that a commitment you've made to others, and what happens if it doesn't happen?
Well, relative to the commitment we're making to you, yes, that is, and relative to others, the others that we have to interact with are typically our debt and equity investors, so whoever's providing the mortgage through Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac, and then the purchaser of the tax credits that Dave described. So as you can imagine, they have their own team of consultants who descend on the property and evaluate what we plan to do and how much we plan to spend and what we plan to spend it on. If they're not comfortable with the scope of work that we've put forth, then we negotiate with them to either increase it or move money from one place to another, so forth. So it's all a very highly vetted process through the underwriting of those debt and equity sources. So at the end of the day, we have a commitment to them memorialized in an agreement that says, we will spend this much amount of money and we will accomplish the following things at the property.
So, excuse me, my whole, so you don't understand, just as I don't understand a lot of things, too, and that's what I'm getting at.
Well, I have questions based on the agreement that I've seen, and I understand the agreement is now based on different statutes, so than the first one we got, so that we'd have to do our looking into that statute and see the applicability, because...
Correct.
...one of the things we discovered in this was that the statute that was being referenced only allowed for twenty years. So I have questions about the things that are in here and the what-ifs, to, and as the counselor said about trying to decide, you know, what, what are we giving away here, and what's the value of what we're giving away?
I guess, I guess it's my way of saying that I'm not smart enough to ask the questions you're asking, though. I'm not as, I don't yell, anyways. Maybe Mark could answer, is that okay?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm in the same boat, I mean, I, I think it would be helpful. You know, we had a, Ted, we had a discussion fairly late this afternoon and about the enterprise zone, and so I, you know, we've been, the council has copies of the, of the agreement that you had sent down and also provided the mayor. So in your mind, how does that, because an enterprise zone, to me, is very different. I mean, when I got, when I started going through Chapter One fourteen of the Connecticut City and Town Development Act and saw that this had to go to public referendum, good luck with that.
That was the, that was the primary reason that, you know, one, we realized that the property was in fact in an enterprise zone, so it opened up.
So how would you see, you know, the enterprise zone's been here for twenty years, and probably Pfizer and EB have figured out every, every aspect of the enterprise zone, but I'm not aware that we've had any multifamily developers really take advantage of it, and as the council may, may or not, may or may not be, there's really two components of the enterprise zone. One is, you know, for, for businesses, industry, you know, it's pretty clear. You do something, you increase value, you get a benefit. Residential is a little bit different, so we've had some residential development, but not anywhere near this. So the delta, as far as I know, is still on the increase in value of the project. You're spending a lot of money per unit, but we've had other projects in town where people buy a project, buy a property, spend a ton of money, but it doesn't necessarily increase the value. So I'm, I'm kind of, I think where Marion is, you know, having picked up that you're, you know, you're looking at the enterprise zone program, which would probably be easier, how does this agreement change, or in general terms? Because this is what everybody's looking at, is this agreement, and I, my gut sense is probably the next agreement's going to be very different, but maybe not. And I don't know if you've done work in enterprise zones in the state at this point.
When we were doing the research on the enterprise zone, we found that the legislature really did intend it to cover two things, both commercial, but also affordable housing specifically, and residential housing, and so we thought that this would be a really great fit. As to the, the agreement, you know, the, the details will be worked out a little bit more, but it will be the basic format. This type of agreement was based on the one that was done in Bridgeport. The Bridgeport ordinance was based on both the Tax Incentive Act, but also on Section E of the Enterprise Zone Act, and so they use that as statutory authority to come up with the agreement. So I suspect that the form of the agreement, other than concerns both by the town council and the city council, to be reflected in it, but the form would be similar to this other than citing a different statute.
Just, we've been trying to assemble some pieces of information and had come across minutes, John Reiner found them, of the Housing Authority meeting, where some of this was talked about, there may have been other discussions, I, I don't know, but somewhere in these minutes it notes that the potential bond is fifty million dollars. You're talking about around an eighteen and a half million dollar renovation improvement cost. Where's the rest of the money going, or is that just a high number?
So the development budget, which uses all of the funds that come into the project, is comprised of acquisition costs, renovation costs, soft costs for all the professionals that are involved. On the financing, there are, there are costs of issuance, as you can imagine, there's underwriter fees, there are bank fees, and of course, everybody who I just described has an attorney, so there are a number of attorney fees are involved. And then we set up a rather healthy number of escrows, both operating reserves, replacement reserves, and then also contingency items. And of course, as a developer, we're entitled to a developer fee to... And of course, as a developer, we're entitled to a developer fee to undertake the deal. So if you add up all those things, that equates to the bond amount plus the tax credit raise, which is about...
Twenty-seven million.
Twenty-seven million dollars in tax credit raise.
Yeah, I think I picked up somewhere in here that for the Housing Authority, and this is a good thing, as far as I'm concerned, the Housing Authority, while they will have very little, possibly no liability for the bonds, is going to be collecting a fee of around three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Could you explain how that was determined? A percentage of something?
It's a percentage on the issued bond amount. So I think in this case, it's...
Yeah, it was originally designed at seventy-five basis points, but then the number got fixed. So as the loan amount, I think, changed slightly from forty-eight to fifty-nine dollars, then the number got fixed. And seventy-five basis points is a pretty standard bond issuance fee. We've done deals in a number of places, and it's a pretty standard fee. That's what we proposed, and they'd agreed upon it.
Mark, the number is going to be fifty-five million.
Okay.
And the question I have by many is that, I don't think the authorities are going to borrow fifty-five million dollars. And by virtue of this conduit of finance, and we're not going to be on the hook for anything, do you agree?
Correct.
So my point is, we need to do some good diligence on our side of the transaction. You know, because we have no capacity to do about a big amount of fifty-five million dollars.
Of course not. And to answer that, there is a very key professional attorney who's involved in this process. And they serve as what's known as bond counsel. So they're the ones who understand the transaction, provide an opinion as to the taxes and nature of the bonds, and then they will also clearly explain how, under no circumstance whatsoever, is the Housing Authority have any liability at all. This concept of local issuance of bonds through either housing authorities or some states use what are called IDAs, which are otherwise known as industrial development authorities. It's common practice throughout the country where, you know, hundreds of billions of dollars of bonds are issued. So she can certainly provide all those.
It could be true.
It's how the business is. Absolutely, absolutely. I'm sure any questions you have of her, she can answer them for you.
So it sounds to me like there needs to be some more research on our end, and we can't come to any conclusions tonight. Like, it seems like it's opened the door for some more discussions.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
That was our hope tonight, Mayor, was to really answer any initial questions, explain who we are and what we plan to do with the project, and open the discussion, really was our goal this evening.
Deputy Mayor Key... Hedrick, did you want to ask something?
Yes. In regards to your comment about the lenders, you had said that you had your own financing set up. Is a lender your... Are they a part of your larger company or are they independent?
Completely independent. So the ultimate lender, which we haven't chosen yet, will be a brand name that you're familiar with, someone like a Citibank or a Wells Fargo or one of those types of lenders.
And then how does the AA expiration impact this?
The which?
You said, one of the things you said is that the AA...
Section eight.
Section eight, right, thank you. Section eight is going to expire this year. How does that impact this?
Well, as preservationists, so what we do when we purchase properties like Bradford Manners, we go to HUD, who's the administrator of the section eight contract, and we seek to renew that. HUD does not issue any new project-based section eight contracts, but they do renew ones that are expiring. So we would go to HUD and obtain a twenty-year contract with HUD to continue to provide the section eight assistance.
So there'd be an expectation of the renewal of the section eight?
Correct, correct.
And that'll happen on the day of closing. So even though the expiration is at the end of the year, we'll go in and ask HUD on the day of closing, which we're projecting to be August, to have it run from twenty years from that date going forward.
And that's in place. Twenty years is the longest contract that HUD currently offers.
I had a question that maybe you can provide the answers for in the future. I understand you're preserving the, you say, the affordable housing, and I understand what you're asking for. Can you give us an idea of what revenue you're going to make? So, I mean, I'd be more inclined to look at what we're giving you as a benefit to the revenue that you're making. And in other words, if your revenue continues to grow, and I'm making up the numbers, ten percent, but you're seeking a zero to three, you know, three percent, I'd want to see the relationship of the two. And, you know, if your revenue is increasing at a higher rate, I think you're looking at... You understand what I'm saying?
Absolutely. And we can, going through the details of pro forma right now, doesn't it make sense? We can share information on that. I will also say that, as you can imagine, with a transaction of this size, there are numerous guarantees that we have to provide to various partners. So the investor who's going to be purchasing the tax credits requires a guarantee on our behalf that those tax credits will be delivered over the next ten years, as well as the lender is going to require that we deliver what we say we're going to deliver in terms of completing the project and other aspects. So if the project doesn't perform, which is not our history to have projects that don't perform, obviously, we're on the hook to make our partners whole. So obviously, any return that we make on a transaction is, in our mind, balanced against the risk that we obviously undertake to do that deal. But we can certainly...
Yeah, I understand. I just think that when you're looking at the break that you're looking for, I think someone brought it up, that we've seen in the past, we've seen the tax abatement to be, you know, two years zero, the next year one percent, the fourth year two percent, and then you're made whole with us and you go on whatever it is that's going to be assessed value. So when you're going out thirty years like this, it does, and the first ten are at zero, like, does make your...
Yeah, we typically seek a thirty-year period because of the fact that the financing is a thirty-year financing program normally. And also, you know, quite frankly, this type of real estate is not inexpensive to manage and operate. And we like to seek, as Dave described, predictability, as well as numbers that work in our underwriting. And that really is important on a HUD subsidized property because they can, over time, become very expensive to operate.
And I think that the numbers that you gave will put it into perspective.
Sure.
Mark, did you have a...
Yeah, I just wanted to point, I mean, I do think it would be a good idea, Marion and I haven't had a chance to talk about this, but I think the process would be best served if we could get town staff and city staff together to meet with representatives, maybe not all of you, whoever you want, and try to work out some of the details. We need to digest the whole enterprise zone end of this, because as I said, we've been really focusing on some other statute at this point. One thing I did want to point out, as the council is aware, we're in the process of doing a rebound, which becomes effective October first. I have no idea what that means for this property. But given that it's so close, I would like to think that we would want to use that new number. I think we have an assessed value on this property right now of around fifteen and a half million dollars, if I remember correctly.
Appraised.
Whereas, you know, a little bit across town, we have a three-hundred-unit development, very different, very different, but it's around forty-two million dollars. So, and we're seeing that apartment, our sense is apartments are very much in demand, even these. And these are tired units with all due... These are very tired units. I almost hate to say it, but Captain Mark Deno is here, and to some degree, this project, it almost reminds me of the PPV that we did up at the sub-bass, where, you know, they privatized Navy housing. And it was all done in an effort to infuse new money and to redevelop those units. Very different structure, but kind of the similar concept. So for those of us who thought that was a good thing at the time to take those fifteen-hundred units or whatever and spiff them up and really rebuild most of them, renovate some of them, it was a good thing. But we need to, I certainly need a lot more information. I don't even know the questions to ask at this point, but I think between the mayor's staff and Paige and John Reiner and the assessor, we'd like to have a sit-down with you sooner as opposed to later, so we can wrap our arms around this.
Your presentation indicates that you are looking to have this decided by June second?
It's probably aggressive.
I just, I wondered how hard and fast that was.
Well, under our contract, we need to close in August. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that we have enough time, once the taxes are set, in order to finalize the other aspects of the deal. So I think June second is too aggressive and also probably not the drop-dead date for getting something like this figured out. But I do think that sometime in the month of June is when we need to sort of hammer out what we're going to look like.
I'll keep this and we'll wrap it up after.
Yes, I promise. You know, I'm reminded of, I hate to bring this up like this, but I really am reminded of a Seinfeld episode where he was dating a woman that just looked different in different lights. And I keep looking at this sentence at the end, and now I'm back to thinking, like the mayor is, that I was right the first time. I'm reading it again, and no event shall the property pay an amount higher than would otherwise be required without this tax incentive agreement. Now I'm reading it back again. It's a cap.
Right. So that unfortunately is existing in another agreement...
Yeah.
...that we use as a red line to show an example. So that sentence would not exist in the agreement.
Okay. Because when we're all done talking about what we think it means, there'll be the language when we're all gone. So it's just, again, just something to think about, and thank you for offering that.
So the next steps would be the mayor's getting, I'm sorry, mayor, town manager getting together, talking things out, and then getting with you guys and moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're back. How are you? Big transition here anyways.
We're taking a break.
There's a big transition.
We're going to take a three-minute for transition purposes. That's what I was hoping. All right, we're back. We're back and better than ever. So the next items on the agenda are, there's four of them, all having to do with the School Facilities Initiative. And the next four are, so what we'd like to do is have the Board of Education members who are here and the School Facilities Task Force members who are here and come up to the U, so we can have a discussion about what's taking place.
It's an O.
It's an O. Well, I was just looking, because I didn't want him on the O side, so...
It's a UU.
He said the same thing the same time.
I know what you mean. They're scared of the O.
Thank you, town manager, Mark. Hey, Bez, as people speak, want to remind you to make sure there's a microphone in front of you, so that people at home can hear you.
Yes.
Right? And John, are you going to kick it off?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So John Heller, who was the main person in the task force.
And then we'll shift. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board of Ed members and councilors. Thanks so much for having us. Again, I'm John Heller, the chairman of the School Facilities Initiative Task Force. And we are back. We were here just a couple of weeks ago, but we are back. I want to start off just by putting out a little disclaimer of a lesson that my mother taught me some years ago, which is, Mom said that the first rule of righteous indignation is to be right. And so I'm putting that out as both a prophecy and a little disclaimer, that, you know, I'm going to say some things tonight, and I hope I'm right. I think I'm standing on the side of the angels, but, you know, if for some reason I'm off by something, I put that little disclaimer out. But yes, as I was quoted as saying, the situation that we're in now is a bummer. And I want to quote myself, wow, that is unfortunate. But here we are. So following the proper procedures, as we briefed you all some weeks ago, we went for special legislation. We went up to the State House to try to get special compensation for our situation, our very unique situation. We met with Commissioner Curry's staff four times. She was in the room for one of those meetings throughout the last six or so months. We knew we were jumping in a year early on getting our bond up there. And again, this was special legislation that we were shooting for. And during that whole process, at no point did the staff ever indicate that jumping in a year early would be an issue. We were well aware of the process, and Representative Scott guided us through that process. Up there in his offices, he did a very nice job. We always intended to meet a June sixteen deadline to actually file our grant application. The state encouraged us to continue to do that. We always knew cost was going to be an issue, but we were encouraged to keep going, to put that application now as per the regular process. So here we are. As the Commissioner, Commissioner Curry made very clear, she's not putting this forward into the legislative session. So we're going back to an earlier plan that we had, which was to, instead of going for the special legislation, we're going to go for a regular grant application. We think we could qualify for a diversity grant. As you know, this year, we are barely in compliance with our Claude Chester school. We've been out of compliance for years, but we're in compliance, thanks to the redistricting that the Board of Ed has done so many times to get us into compliance. But we're forecasting that this next year, we'll be back on the dark side of that line. We'll be back on out of compliance with that school, and so we'll need to figure something out. So we sharpened our pencils and went back to our renovate-like-new plan, that we're going to give you some numbers on tonight that will reduce some costs to us, but we'll also be still having to look for a waiver from the state's one hundred and fifty-dollar per square foot limit. But one more time, that's where we sit right now. We knew the procedures. Representative Scott guided us through that process, which, by the way, is not a very transparent process. It's not very easy to navigate that process. But he deftly got us the guidance and advice. He and our consultant, Mr. Zubo, guided us through that process, I think, very well. One more time, we're going for special legislation. They didn't grant us special legislation. It's like asking your mom for permission, but we're still following the House rules. We're looking for special permission, you know, to deviate from the normal rules, and we want granted that. But it's not that we didn't know what we were doing. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Zubo to give us some more details on that.
Yeah, thanks, John. And, you know, we knew that the application would be going in in June, and we weren't asking to be on the bond bill for this year at all. But what we were asking to be on would be some consideration for our project, which would be up and coming in the coming year. And, you know, we pretty well articulated what the situation was in Groton with some past referendums, and why we would need some assurances on what additional dollars we'd be able to get in gaining support to be able to have a successful referendum. One of the interesting things as part of the process is that in order to qualify for a diversity grant, it's all predicated on students that are in the seats on October first. It doesn't matter if it's different in May, in April, in January, if that deviation from the twenty-five percent is there. It's all based on October first. And when we begin this planning process, and during the years of, we were in the process, Claude Chester was actually in compliance. It just so happens to be that the way the legislation is drafted, your grant application and the racial imbalance have to occur in the exact same timeframe, making it a very sticky situation if you're one of those school systems that has made good faith effort to be able to be in compliance with the state mandate. If you were one of the school systems that was so far out of compliance, where you stood no chance at wavering below the line, and didn't go through the efforts, then, you know, you were sort of rewarded at the state level with the diversity grant. But here, that wasn't the case. But either way, what John had mentioned is that, you know, we've taken a look at the building program and really where the state is and where Groton is financially. And we looked at the option of building two new schools on both of the middle school sites. And what was part of our process and part of the task force's plan early on was to be able to renovate those schools as new. So we've drawn back into that part of the plan, and that is the idea going forward, that that would be part of the building program. It saves some pretty significant dollars overall. There are pros and cons to it in that, rather than having concurrent building projects, as you can see in the schedule that we've provided, you would have to take on the middle school project first and then get in...
Councilor Watson, from my perspective, yes, this is going to cost us more. We were asking for one hundred and forty-one million. We're not going to get that. We'll ask for less. I want to reassure the voters, to keep it clear to you and them as a voter, that we knew what we were doing. We didn't skip any procedures. We didn't do anything wrong. It's not that we didn't know the proper procedures. We did follow the steps needed for school construction. We're following those steps. I want to reassure the voters that we have our act together. And again, Representative Scott deftly guided us through that process in his role in Hartford, to follow those set procedures.
Simply put, we saw that circumstances here versus what other communities face in Connecticut are vastly different. We're being held to a mandate that some others don't actually go through in a good faith effort to follow through on, trying to meet that. Groton did, and we brought it to the state in showing that, yes, we've gone through this. We've taken the necessary steps. However, we're looking to you now to permanently solve the problem in hopes that we can get a hand up. And unfortunately, it was a leap of faith, and it didn't work. We said no guarantees. There was a lot at play. And if you read the news, you're following what's going on, you know that there's many more issues at the state. Timing could have been part of it. However, everybody is still committed to the plan. We're looking at what is still being able to deliver the impact that is needed at the least amount of cost to the taxpayers. So the concession is to be able to go to a renovate like New London Buildings.
Dr. Grenier?
I want to echo what Councilor Watson said. I think we were burned. And when I read the newspaper report the other day, actually Representative Scott read it to me, and he said, "This is going to be negative." And I knew the truth. And I knew that the article reported facts that did not occur. And in my mind, I thought, well, everyone's going to see through this. But what happened to us, happened to us. So I'll just give you the last eight days. Last Monday night, I was at home, and Representative Scott called me and said, "If you could come up here, I'd really appreciate it." And I called Chairman Watson. And we, in fact, went to the state and up to the Capitol, spent twelve hours there, essentially lobbying for a bill. And John, I cannot say enough about Representative Scott. He introduced us to House leadership. We met with the Senate, some of the Senate leaders, Senator Formica from Hartford in East Line was really helpful. And they kept on saying to us, "Where's the bill? Where's the language?" And I knew that I had met with the staff, and I met with Commissioner Curry, who gave us her personal assurance that she would make sure the bill was written. I spoke to the person who wrote the language. It's a fairly simple amendment, but I spoke to that person. I spoke to Mike Zubba and our architect, who went up for two other meetings. We had been working since, I think it was January tenth. John submitted the bill language on January twenty-seventh. We knew all of that. And I thought, and frankly, John thought, that there was some glitch in delivering the bill. So here we were lobbying for twelve hours, essentially making fools of ourselves, because there was no bill. There was no language. And the next day, when John met with the commissioner, the commissioner admitted that she had withdrawn the bill, having unfortunately forgetting to tell us, as we sat there for twelve hours on the bench, waiting to talk to these people. And then, when she made the statement that she made, that had become quite public, it was, it is extremely damaging. And I think you're right, Harry. The damage that has been done to a lot of hard work, and I keep referring to Representative Scott, John opened the door for us. We knew nothing about this. And in early January, he invited us to his office. And lo and behold, the top officials from the Department of Administrative Services were there. And I thought, wow, this is great. We're really getting the ground rules. And they explained to what was going on. And John had his legal assistant there, and who was going to write the bill, and all of that. And then, of course, when we went back in mid-January to meet with the commissioner, and we took Representative Winkler with us, and there was a great deal of warm feelings between the commissioner and Representative Winkler, and "we're going to help you," and so forth. And something happened. I don't know what happened. I have, you know, I think the, part of the obvious answer is that the state is trying to cut nearly a billion dollars. So when you're asking for a request, and by the way, we are already entitled to ninety-four million dollars. So when people hear, "You're asking for one hundred and ninety-one," I mean, one hundred and forty-one, we weren't asking for one hundred and forty-one. We already had ninety-four in our pocket. The question was, could we go from ninety-four to one hundred and forty-one? So we were asking, if my math is right, about forty-seven, forty-six million dollars. That was the request. And a simple answer from the commissioner could have been, "I'm really sorry. This is a tough year. We're cutting budgets like crazy, and we're not going to be able to do it." And she could have told us that when she pulled the bill before Kim and I went and made this public display of ourselves advocating, lobbying quite articulately for a bill that was never written. And we found out twenty-four hours later that the bill was never written. And then, to find out, after talking to, I think, a very responsible journalist, Deb Strasheim, called me and said, "This is what the commissioner said." And I said, "Well, that's not true. We worked for four months. We knew what we were doing, as John said. Mike has done this many times. We knew exactly what we were doing. We knew exactly the procedure." But, you know, I've been confronted, perhaps as some of you have, by members of the public, you know, who basically say, "You didn't follow the right procedure. Who's to blame?" And I don't think, I really do believe, while there may be some underhandedness here, I think the money part of it hurt us. And so now, we have a public who has been told one side of facts. And, you know, from my perspective, the council has two alternatives, to go forward, looking at your crystal ball, to see if we would in fact be successful asking the voters, despite all the noise that's out there, would you support an eighty-four million dollar bond at taxpayer expense? Or saying to, well, I would turn to Mayor Flax and say, "Let's appoint another commission, and do Plan B, and come back and break it up." The board and I talked about this last night, breaking it up into more bite-sized pieces. For example, my plan only, no one else's. If we took S.B. Butler and Clotchester School and created a diversity school as step one, it would cost twelve million dollars to the taxpayer. Could we do that as step one? I think we could. My plan only, I'm not selling it. I'm just suggesting that if another smaller task force, a lot of good work has already been done, but if there was another task force, another committee essentially put together with some of the folks that are sitting around this table, I believe, not by June thirtieth, but I believe that we could put a plan together. But it seems to me, that's what the town council has...
I think it's an important point to realize that the committee that was put together is pretty much done. You know, you met, you submitted a plan, and it was handed to the council and the Board of Ed. And, you know, it's our turn to figure out what to do next. Of course, that is one option. I know, Councilor Antipas, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I had a question. This had to do with the, and this would be the time to correct me, and you can do it in any manner you wish. So originally, we were hoping, and I understand completely that this was, nothing was guaranteed. This is how I understood it, and I'm hoping that everybody else understood it the same way. That if all went well, we would be net asking the voters to cough up fifty-five million dollars. Under this proposal, the scaled-back proposal, we're looking at eighty-four million dollars. Is that the comparison?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Given what we were told in the initial presentations, that it was a market analysis, if you will, of what, you know, were you to support a school project, school improvement? How much would you tolerate that there was a majority support, over fifty percent, for something in the range of fifty-five million? How do you think the eighty-four million would fare now?
When we had asked a question revolving around the original number, which was about ninety-four million, was in the public opinion survey, we had fifty-two percent support at that number. However, it was plus or minus four percent. So when we looked at the numbers and we asked the same question at several price points now, and we were able to create a curve on that, so we saw that if we were able to get the cost down, we knew that at fifty-five million, based on our public opinion survey, that we were around fifty-eight, sixty percent. That's why we felt good about that number. And when we had talks with the state, because we were going out of process, they did not want to provide a lift up to Groton if it was something that wasn't going to pass locally. So that was all part of, you know, positioning for that number. However, where we originally stood before we took that leap of faith, we were at about a ninety-four million dollar project last year, and that had, you know, support of right around fifty percent. So with ten million dollars less, granted, the nature of the renovation versus new construction has changed slightly. We still see it as a potentially viable project moving forward. It's just for everybody being able to get their heads wrapped around sort of the changes there.
Yeah. I mean, my suggestion would be, don't confuse yourselves, I mean, you folks, you've done sterling work, as far as I'm concerned, in terms of presentation and analysis, and I cannot imagine the total number of hours you've all spent. You're probably headed for a beatitude of some sort, in some church somewhere. Yeah. I think there's no question that a lot of voters would look at this, and just look at it from, they don't want to get into the details. They're going to look at it from the point of view of money. And you just can't help that part. You can only do so much explaining. But there is another segment, and I brought it up before, that don't like the idea of the single middle school. But there is, in that group, there are people that might be convinced, if you demonstrate, get it out somehow, I don't know how else you would do it, that notwithstanding that you've got one school, but the grades would in fact be separated, and that the argument of, well, you know, you're going to lose kids at that at a very tender age, has been addressed, not programmatically, but physically, that might get you, that might get you over the line, if that's what you're looking to do. But you know your business, so...
Yeah. And just to touch on, I think something that we had talked about a lot of, was really brought to light, and especially until now, with, you know, the recent state of budgets, is that whether you agree philosophically with how education is going to be deployed, two middle schools or one middle school, when you have two smaller buildings operating independently, and you combine them together, there is a tremendous amount of economy there, especially when you look at how teams are done with the teachers, and you look at support staff, everything it takes sort of behind the scenes to run the building. So not only are you looking at a great savings from just going from two middle schools to one, we're also talking about going from three smaller elementary schools, that two-section-per-grade elementary schools are one of the most inefficient K-five systems out there. We're in all sorts of those. Being able to go from three of those to two, where you're looking at having much better adherence to your class-size guidelines, greater savings on building administration, maintenance, as well as staffing, teaching staff, building administration. I see, Ms. Austin with her hand up. You probably want to chime in? No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, we've even looked at numbers, and I know you had kind of gone over that again.
Want to pass the microphone down?
Yeah. We can hear you, but we won't make it on the tape.
So we've even done some analysis, looking at taking four schools offline into the two. And I know that the numbers were pretty tight, but, you know, that was something that we were examining. And Mike kind of went through that to see, could that be possible? And it would really be a cost savings over time. I think that we could probably figure out what that would be. And I think that's something we need to look at in the long run, especially with the older buildings that are, you know, really costing us a lot to repair over time. So it would be a savings with personnel, with staff, and with the building facility.
Yeah, we had tested that option today with the state of, you know, operational costs and budgets. And, you know, everybody in the state is going towards, you know, being able to deliver education at a less costly option than they are today. And that's truly through consolidation with declining enrollment. And, you know, the elementary schools are going through some declining enrollment. There's a movement of students to the magnet schools and the other offerings in the region. But we looked at it today using the current numbers, and, you know, it could have been accomplished, but for sake of two seats, we came short by two seats ultimately. And that was with pulling portables offline, doing everything that we had planned for in the plan. So we know it's very viable. We know that enrollment is going to continue to decline, but at what rate is what we question. It's not something we want to put out there as a definitive today, but is a very real possibility, especially if New London gets their full pathways online earlier. The funding of the magnet programs in the state is very much up in the air, as well as ECS. But we just wanted to make people aware that that is a real possibility for even larger savings, in addition to what we're currently estimating. And we're being very conservative when we're saying, this is at least two and a half million. We didn't even talk about instructional staff at all, which is a huge driver in budget considerations, because we know that there is definitely going to be instructional staff savings when you go from, say, three, three-hundred-and-fifty student elementary schools into two larger, six-hundred-student elementary schools. You're going to need less teaching staff. You're going to have better class sizes right at your targets, in addition to everything else. So we know that number at the bare minimum is two and a half reoccurring annual savings. It's just what else could it, what else could it be?
Councilor Morton?
Yeah. I think this development is just heartbreaking on so many levels. The thing I'm concerned about was, I remember when we were meeting the first time with the task force, and the whole issue of where was the threshold that we thought, as far as pricing goes, where we could be pretty sure we might have a reasonable expectation of the voters approving it. And it was the fifty-five million dollar mark. I'm really concerned now, because when we voted on moving forward with this plan, the question came up with, we realized that there was no guarantee of the state funding. But at the same time, I think we assured all of the viewers who were watching that if we did not get the money that we expected to from the state, then this was dead on arrival. I mean, those are the words we used. We won't be moving forward. If the state reneges or doesn't come through, then we're done. And now we're sitting here. The state, I think, has lost all trustworthiness, as far as I'm concerned, and I think a lot of taxpayers. I don't think the state can be trusted now to do anything. I'm concerned because they're even looking to cut ECS money. I mean, let alone building money. They're looking to cut basic ECS grants. So given that, I think if we come before the taxpayers now and say, "Well, we didn't get it, but here's the new plan. It's only thirty million more dollars, but now we want you to do this." I don't think people, because there's too many uncertainties. And I think that we, there's a huge risk that the voters are going to vote this down again. And I don't think we can afford to have them turn down another school referendum. I mean, how many times can you do that before the people just get tired of it? I just think it's a bad idea to move forward.
I got to disagree with your counsel, Morton. Yes, the last time here, you were one of the people who approved this along with the rest of the council. I knew your feelings. You were even willing to go along with the fifty-five million. I think we should go forward at this time, because this plan has completely changed from the last referendum attempt several years back. The purpose of the one middle school right now makes more sense than the two, because the population with two eight-hundred-student middle schools, we had fourteen-hundred middle school students to carry that. We don't have that anymore. So it only makes sense to go with one middle school. And the location they came up with ends up being a wonderful location if it all goes through. We put back online from the original plan, what the people were promised on how the school system and the planning of this master plan was going to go. We're going to put an elementary school back in the city. They were all moved out. That means you have walkers. You have neighborhood schools still hanging around. People wanted that. So we're giving the people what they wanted, going back to the master plan. The revow back in two thousand and one killed taxes for people. They raised them three times much. Councilor Barbara, you're in the area. Your taxes went through the roof on that. Two years later, on the second go around, they voted in the plan. It was reduced, but the amount of taxes people still had to pay isn't going to be that much different if this goes through at eighty-four million dollars. If you get the old printout of what your taxes for the twenty years were, it's not going to be that much difference on a plan that is twice as much larger schools for more students and reducing board of education costs. I'm not saying you're saving a dime. You haven't received their budget. I'm not even talking about their budget. But you are going to reduce administrators. You are going to take schools offline, and you're going back on the plan. It can be explained to the people, and I think it should go forward, because we can all educate the people until the RTM approves this to send it to referendum. And then the PAC needs to do it, if their PAC is formed. This is explainable. The young parents who have kids in school like their plan. It may not be new, but they like the plan of fixing their schools up, the new middle school, and fixing the East West Side and up into an elementary school. So many of those things are all what the people are looking for. Those who don't have kids in school, yes, their taxes, but we're still talking under a hundred dollars a year for the taxes. It isn't a breaker. You heard Ledge Light. Education is the key to everything around here. So I think we need to still move forward. God forbid it doesn't pass. Then we can start looking into Plan Bs that the education system might be talking about on options. But I think we should move forward with this.
Councilor De La Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with you wholeheartedly. I think, now we're trying to break up plans and see what could do, you know, right off the top of our head, after three years of twenty-five people meeting and coming up with this plan that, and what's surprising, not surprising, but what's disheartening, I think, is all these folk, me included, for the last eighteen months, we put all this time into it. And we weren't pie-in-the-sky stuff. We weren't looking for the gold toilets in the hallways lined with marble. We were looking for what we needed, and we came up with that plan, what we needed. So to even talk about two junior, all that is mute. We actually talked about all that stuff. And if the cost is ninety-four million dollars, then the taxpayers, they should see it and have a chance to vote on it. Whether you like it or not, you can go to the polls and vote up or down on it. But I would certainly support it, even at the ninety-four. Just because the state of Connecticut is absolutely running away from educating our kids, it doesn't mean that we have to. Because they're, because they're kind of, I think they're almost trying to get out of the business of educating kids. Well, then, we have to do it as a town. I mean, and we even heard, I mean, I talked to other people, and they say, "Well, in other states, they do county schools." Well, we have forty-two thousand people living in Groton. We shouldn't have to put our kid on a bus and go forty-five minutes to another town. We also have bad weather, so you can't compare us to Florida. You can't have kids on buses for forty-five minutes in snow and rain. But let's believe it to the voters. And I'm going to do my part, because I think it's a good plan. I mean, I didn't spend that much time, and it was probably the best group I was ever a member of, to see the different opinions and get funneled into that one opinion. And it was one of the proudest things we ever worked on, and it was great meeting all the new people. But all the different opinions started in twenty-five different directions, and we got to that one point. So to try to divide up the plan now and try to say, question what was done, it was so far beyond that. And I was disappointed, almost, I think, I don't cry too often, but when I opened up the paper, it was close, because I thought that was horrible. I thought they should have helped us out. We're a unique community, and they just didn't recognize it or didn't care. But it's up to us to educate our own kids. And if the state doesn't want to be part of it, then we have to do without them, I guess.
Councilor Watson, did you want to say anything before you...
Yeah, I have to leave early. I got to have an early flight. I have to get up to Hartford. Why don't we ask the commissioner to come down here?
Take a call.
Well, why not ask her? I mean, to understand our town, I mean, there's just so many pieces to it. I've been around for a long time, and I go back to failed referendums. I was around when the last one passed. But that whole redistricting stuff and people calling me, and, you know, "How come my kid has to go to this school when I can see this school from our house? That's where she's already gone." We spent six hundred grand on transportation when we redistricted last time, or something like that. I'm not sure that she understands what we're all talking about. In the three years of hard work...
I'm sure she cares, Harry.
Yeah, if I could answer that, the school bonding bill will be handled in a special session that will hopefully happen later this week, but it'll go along with the budget. I don't think we should beat anybody up over this decision, because we still need her...
I'm not talking about beat her up. I think that to try to make her understand what we're talking about, how many people have worked so hard to try to solve something that they're telling us to solve anyways.
Right. And, you know, your superintendent of schools and your chairman of the Board of Ed did a really good job in Hartford the other day explaining that. But procedurally, you know, we're actually at the point where we have to roll forward.
I'm frustrated.
Yeah, I'm frustrated too. I mean, you know, there's a lot of stuff that, a lot of work that was put into it by myself and my staff up in Hartford and people around this table, and it's frustrating. And if I could just go back to Councilor Morton's statement, I understand your concern about not trusting the state. But with these school bonding packages, this is a process that a lot of towns are going through, and there's a lot of school construction projects that are going in under what we consider, you consider the normal process of the application by June and all that. For the state to come to the finish line on those projects and say, "Yeah, we promised you forty-seven, but we're really going to give you thirty-five," would not go over well. And those decisions are really being made by DAS. You know, the process for these school construction bills is, just about a hundred percent of the work is done by DAS, where they approve all the applications, and then they write the bonding language that's submitted to the legislature for approval. And so there's a main bill that has all of the schools that went through the regular process. And it's online, like Bledyard had a referendum a year ago, and so there are two, well, maybe even three schools are on that bill, and Stone and Ten and a few other communities, all the schools that they're replacing or building as new are listed there as a regular part of the regular bill. What we were looking to do, and other towns were trying to do the same thing, I'm sure we're not the only ones. I still haven't had time to digest what other towns may have gotten stuck in this thing. But there's, when the main bill hits the House floor, there's an immediate amendment made that includes notwithstanding language that we had hoped would include Groton's request for one hundred and forty-one million. And then there was other towns that are looking for a million dollars here, or five million dollars there, to fix something that maybe they messed up on the initial application process. And that was the amendment. I was waiting for the language to come through, and nobody would provide. So I think, you know, rolling forward, I think we're safe in trusting the percentage numbers that Mike Zubba's been giving you with respect to what we'd qualify for under certain circumstances, whether it be, I was writing numbers down quickly, the fifty-seven percent or the forty-seven percent. And then, you know, if the diversity numbers hit the right mark, we could qualify for up to eighty percent on one of the buildings. So I think those percentages are trustworthy percentages, because by June thirtieth, we'll have had the regular application, and we'll go through the normal process rolling forward.
Councilor Barbara?
You said that we pushed this through early. Why was that?
We were looking for special legislation to try and get seventy-one percent. Instead, we knew we weren't qualifying for a diversity waiver that would give us eighty percent. percent. We knew, we knew we weren't qualifying for that, and so we, we said, if we can go ask for special legislation in this, in this session, we would be able to tell the voters, hey, we've gotten approval in the, in, to have the, the grant approved prior to the referendum. So it's not unheard of. It's, it is special, but it is done, and so that's, that's why we were shooting for that.
If I could just, if I could just jump on on that. You know, you have to remember that over the last five years, Grotons have been in or out of trouble with this diversity thing.
No, I know that.
And so as, as this committee fell over the finish line with their project, it was hard for them to identify what number because of, you know, where they're in or out. So by doing what we did, it allowed us to identify a number that we could get from the state and, and then tell the taxpayers what we were working with.
Basically, if, we have a good indication on October first exactly what that number is. However, the state process to finalize counting those students doesn't occur until the report is issued, which is May, early May. So, you know, there's a, a major lag there from reporting on.
I understand that.
Racial balance. So what we would try to do is to be able to get a good feeling of where we were at early on, knowing that for the confidence in the voter, knowing that if something would be set, that we would have a much better chance for an outcome, a positive outcome at referendum, rather than leaving things up in the air kind of as they are, as they are now. It was more of a strategic move in hopes that, you know, we would be able to present our case, and there would be some merit, there would be some merit to the decision-making process up in Hartford then.
So, so my next question is, you scaled it back. Did you scale it back because the percentage is gonna be less? That's what your, your thought process was?
And overall, we had, two years ago, we, that's all we talked about was to renovate like new, and we didn't wanna leave anything up to chance. And then as we went through the estimates with the architect and the cost estimator there, we found that there's this other law on the books that has been there for ten years, but little, it's been little enforced of, you know, if it costs more money than four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot to renovate a building, the state won't grant renovate like new status. And it wasn't until the last two years that they've actually stopped building projects in the middle of design and construction because they were exceeding that. So we wanted to be proactive in that, and we didn't wanna get involved in that, so we moved towards new construction, which was a little more costly. But ultimately, we're falling back on that now and saying, boy, we would like a waiver from this, which there were a number of waivers this year as well. A lot of the hurdles that we're up against are just the state looking to ratchet down costs on construction.
My, my last question. I thought we've always been told that new construction, you get more percentage from the state as opposed to renovation. And now that's changed?
It, it used to be the same up until six or seven years ago. You got the same amount, whether it was renovate or new construction. And then what they began doing is incentivizing renovation to keep the total cost to the state down, so you get a ten percentage point bump, ten percentage point higher in reimbursement if you renovate like new rather, or renovate rather than go with the new construction.
Counselor Tippa says something then.
Yes, yeah. Quick. And this ties into what Counselor Morton said and what others have, have covered, which is a very human instinct to look at the number and say, gosh, you know, I don't have my mind around this thing, and this really is a high number, and I'm gonna err on the side of caution, which the voters have done, which I myself have done in years But before you stick your fingers in your ears and say la, 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 and hope it all goes away, it won't, because I predict what'll happen is there'll be five to ten years of rolling CIPs, which we will try to fend off, and we won't be able to do that indefinitely. And I think, as you said before, whether you're skeptical of this scheme or another plan or anything like that, there is no, I believe this much is true, there is no do-nothing, there is no zero-dollar option. Bear in mind, you're probably right, that if the lowest, lowest, lowest option is still gonna cost us somewhere fifty, sixty million dollars with the lowest level of reimbursement possible, and Groton will be able to brag about new roofs and new furnaces, which nobody sees, which are functional, of course, you need them, but that's where we're headed. So before people skip along and say, nothing, there is no nothing. Something is gonna be spent, it's gonna be a lot of, like I said, we're gonna be nickel and dime for a decade here or less.
Counselor Cruz, do you have a question? So the eighty-four is based upon getting the diversity grant for the, the third item, right? But we won't know that till October first. Is that true? How does that weigh in with the referendum, you know, going out to the public? For the eighty-four number, we're not gonna know the answer until October first about reimbursement rates.
Well, we would, we would at least, if the referendum went forward, of course, the numbers are the, the official numbers are, are taken for Public School Information System on October first. So we would know the numbers that we are reporting, and therefore, we, we would know if we exceeded the, no school, because we have forty-three percent children of color in the district, no school can be twenty-five percent or more. So we would know that on October first. So between October first and November eighth, we would be able to make it clear to the public that, in fact, Groton, that would not be a special request. That, that would simply be, we would be, Groton would be entitled to eighty percent reimbursement for the school that is being renovated to, or constructed to, to replace Clotchester.
But maybe Mark can answer this. When we're drafting a referendum, don't we have to have a, a, a hard number sooner than that, or what is the process?
Well, the referendum has to authorize the entire dollar amount. The explanatory text can go into a little bit of detail about where we think reimbursement dollars are coming from, and maybe in this case, there's a couple of different scenarios. But if I could, if, and I'm probably not gonna say anything that you haven't already heard or somebody has already said, but just to kind of maybe put things in, in order, at least the way I look at this. You know, we've all been dealt a, 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 a big surprise and a huge disappointment, and we can talk about that till the cows come home. But the reality is, is we've, there's been three years of effort put into this and lots of money, lots of consulting time, lots of staff time, and certainly lots and lots of committee membership time. The plan that has been laid out is not a new plan. This is really the original plan up until my recollection around January of this year.
This was Plan A.
This was Plan A, to, to build a new middle school and renovate the two existing middle schools into elementary schools. And it's been touched upon why we've changed, why it got changed to, you know, for new construction. And you can use those arguments against going ahead at this point, but we are where we are. And so, you know, so in my mind, the first decision, or the first, the first decision is, is the plan acceptable? And is the dollar amount something that we feel we can get approved by the voters? You, you certainly don't wanna go forward with something where, if the opinion is absolutely not, it's never gonna get approved. And in fact, that's how we behave. You know, instead of being supportive of the initiative, we kind of kick it out the door in kind of a defeatist way, that it's absolutely, we're, we're absolutely guaranteeing it's not gonna be approved. So to me, the trigger is, it, it, the understanding, this is, this is a plan that's been talked about. This has not been concocted in the last seventy-two hours. This was a plan that had, in fact, been the preferred plan, or the plan we talked about the most up until around January or so. So the eighty-four thousand dollar trigger, it's not fifty-something million, it, it is approximately thirty million dollars more as, as a local match. Do we think it's doable? Do we think there's a better alternative out there? The, you know, and the eighty-four million dollar plan, in my mind, has two premises. One, the four hundred and fifty dollar waiver is provided for, but that won't be until the next legislative cycle. And/or that provision gets rewritten. It's not just a waiver for Groton, but it's an antiquated ten-year-old plus or minus dollar amount that the state has not updated. So that's, there is still something that has to happen in the next legislative cycle. We're not gonna know that by November. And I would argue, even with the diversity grant, my understanding is, and you guys know it more than I, is while the survey is done in October, the official report doesn't come out to May of next year. So we actually just got the report saying formally, we're not out of balance for the current year, even though we've known that since October. And, and there was some discussion. So, you know, there's two options there. Maybe we'll be out of whack again on October, or maybe at this point, we need to be making the argument to the powers that be that, listen, we're never gonna make any progress here. We're in one year, out another year, maybe there ought to be, the legislation ought to really address, listen, if a community, four out of the last five years, eight out of the last ten years has been in and out of diversity, the diversity grant still applies. We want, we want a permanent fix going forward, not, okay, do I have high blood pressure this time I go to the doctor or not? Chances are, if you have it enough, he or she's gonna put you on some blood pressure medicine and take care of the problem, even though you may be lucky one time and not have high blood pressure.
Mark, could I just anecdotally, or ancillary add in there? It's not luckily we weren't out of, out of balance, we redistricted. We moved families to four schools in five years to be in compliance. We did it on the backs of our family.
And, and that was noted earlier. The next step is, like it or not, the clock is ticking. I mean, the reason I, we put the four items on the agenda tonight the way we did was we were gonna be acting on those things tonight. We, we were going to be introducing the ordinance, or saying we were gonna introduce the ordinance next week. We were gonna schedule a public hearing date, and we were gonna formally make referrals to both the Planning Commission of the town and the Funding and Zoning Commission of the city. You're not doing that, we're not saying to do that tonight, but from a timing standpoint, that's what we were supposed to be doing tonight. So if there's any thought that we wanna salvage three years' worth of work, try to make some lemonade out of lemons, be out of the bad news, and, and have some sense that this is doable, we need to make that decision in the next couple of weeks. Not necessarily tonight, but in the next couple of weeks. Because the train is rolling into the station, and it's gonna be rolling out of the station. Because we, as all of you know, our, our pup, our referendum process is arduous, there's a lot of steps, you've all gotten the calendar in the past, we have a little bit of flexibility, but this is not a decision that we can revisit in two months. It will be way too late then. And if the decision is not to go, I mean, if in the thought of, do we go ahead with a referendum with the eighty-four million dollars, with these premises, and also knowing the council's always in a position to pull the project, even after the voters approve it, you have the authority. If the economic conditions of the community change, if the economic conditions of the state change, you do have that. We've never done that, but you do ultimately have that authority to do that. But ultimately, the question is, if not this, what? And if not now, when? And that really gets back to Dean's observation that, you know, walking, we can't, I don't think we can just walk away from this. We would then have to come up with another plan, and at what cost? And at what time is our enemy? If we're worrying about a thirty million dollar difference, and it takes us another three years, you know, we'll probably gobble up, you know, with, with inflation, four or five percent inflation on an annual basis. We're, you know, we haven't, we haven't bought online. I was terrified to see the, the updated schedule talking about nineteen, or twenty-twenty-two as to, you know, but that's the reality. It's, it's almost like, not quite, but it's, sorry, Mark, it's almost like building a submarine. It takes a long time.
Thanks, Mark. So I, I mean, I think that we need to figure some things out, as Mark said, and as Counselor Tippa's pointed out, we do keep kicking the can down. I think, John, you said it when you first started this thing, that the, the thing that was approved, the, the referendum that went to voters before that was not approved, was substantially cheaper than the, the, the one, the plan that we have now. And, you know, one could argue that there was more than there is now. I think that, you know, I think, I don't know if anybody else feels it, I feel a lot of anger. I mean, I, the whole thing, it, it just proves that nothing is easy in government. And if, if I had my druthers, I would have Dr. Grenier redistrict back to the way that it was, and have every school out of, out of whack. And, 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 you know, I don't think that there's, I think you could probably argue that, I mean, you know, you, you've sent some people to schools, like someone else is saying, you could see the school out your window, and you were going to another school, well, screw it. You know, I mean, put everyone back to the school that's closest to them, and October first, they'll all be out of bounds, and we'll get eighty percent in every school.
Sir.
You know, I mean, I, I don't, I think that's unreasonable in my eyes, but reeling it back in, I think that we need to figure out how we're gonna move forward and what the timelines are, that we probably could talk about it all night. And I mean, I think there's some people out there who are hoping we don't talk about it all night. And, and so, you know, I think that we need to at least walk away from here with what's gonna happen, or, you know, we have a four-page plan, can, can we, is, is that enough to, to kind of regroup in two weeks when we have another cow meeting and, and do something with it? Or, you know, do we need to, do we need to have more, more written text and some more ideas about it and, and go from there? Because it sounds to me like the council needs some more information, and some people are, Joe?
All right, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna, and if we do meet in a couple of weeks again, I just wanna get this, is the, the percentage of minorities going down because it's a higher percentage going to New London schools? Is that, because it seemed like we were well within it, and then is that part of it? Like, what's the percentage of, of the four hundred kids going to London? How many, how many minority, how many are not? Is it?
Fairly high percentage are minorities. That, that is, that is true. And, and frankly, I think a good bit of that has to do with the redistricting. They didn't necessarily wanna go to, to, to some other schools. Yeah, I, I, the one thing, I think not only we're angry, I think some of us are feeling exhausted. And if, if we go forward, I, I, I would just implore you, we have to figure out what we're gonna do, and we have to be together. I, I, you know, I will pledge every ounce of energy I have for this plan. If, if the town council wants to move forward with it, I am with you. It's about a hundred and thirty-six dollars per one hundred thousand dollars of assessed evaluation, one-three-six on a hundred thousand. That means the average, the average homeowner to two hundred thousand dollars assessed value home would, would be, be looking at what, one, one, one seventy-two or so, a hundred seventy, two, two seventy, thank you. So is it worth two hundred and seventy-five dollars? You know, what resonated with me this morning, I, I was, I was really concerned, I, I spoke to Paul Shinere yesterday about the editorial he wrote today, and he ended with, things are not going well, and we're deteriorating. And the word deterioration is, in my mind, juxtaposed with investment. Are we gonna make an investment in our community? And if we are, I will pledge, and, and I'm sure everyone around this table will pledge, we will do what is needed to put a plan together that's gonna invigorate our, our schools. And, and we're trying to be practical. Having a new middle school would be a huge addition. Having two new magnet elementary schools would, would, would be terrific. But whatever we do, we have to go forward with, with enthusiasm, and I, I think it was Mark who, or someone said, if we just sort of let it out the gate and let the voters decide, I, I, I don't think, I think the voters need municipal leadership to say, this is the plan, as Counselor Tippa said, not getting any cheaper, there is no zero way to do it, and if, if we're, if we're gonna move forward, then we need to move forward with our arms, you know, really tightly locked. And, and if we need to, to back off and rethink the proverbial Plan B, then as far as I'm concerned, that would be better, that would be far better than a lukewarm, let the voters decide. That, that would be a death knell, I think.
So, John, did you wanna say something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say, I, I hear that we're angry. I, I don't think I'm angry. Again, if, if, if Commissioner, if the Commissioner had come out and said, hey, sorry, Representative Scott, thanks so much for, for trying, but a hundred and forty-one is just not palatable in this budget climate, you know, I'm just gonna have to, I'm not gonna be able to approve this thing, I'm not gonna be able to submit it. I think we would've said, thanks so much, we really appreciate the effort, we understand. And we wouldn't have our feelings hurt. So... And we wouldn't have our feelings hurt. So, you know, I'm not angry that she chose to do that. I can't control her actions. I can only control our actions, our reactions. And frankly, I'd just like to continue moving forward with the positive energy. If that's, if we can use it to motivate us, great. But as far as where that price point was, I think Council Morton was talking about, we'd always said, over our three-and-a-half-year journey, that about $100 million was where we thought that we had to be under. We proved it with our survey to our respondents, and we, you know, so coming in at $84 million now is still, of course, if we gave $55 million, that's what we wanted to do. But I'm not too disappointed, I mean, I'm disappointed we didn't get that, but I'm not angry. I still think this is a good investment on a percentage basis. This is still, we're still getting a higher percentage than we did on the original Phase Two. Phase Two was a $133 million project that was going to cost Groton Techers $66 million, and this one is $184 million. It's only going to cost us $84 million. So we're getting a better percentage back on that. So if we can channel that anger and frustration and motivation, that's great. But I think for us to say, we're going to take our marbles and go home, I just don't know how that's in our interest.
Thank you.
I just have one question. John, when are we going to find out how much they're going to take away from us? The grants for the schools?
We're supposed to have a special session this week, maybe Friday. It's still a lot of things in the air. More information will be coming out in the next couple of days. They did release new budget figures for the latest proposal. So we'll have to see. I don't think it's going to be anywhere near as bad as what we first got hit with. I'm hoping it'll be somewhere in the neighborhood of $250,000, but, you know, it's to be determined still.
Because I think it's interesting to point out that, yes, $250 a year raise isn't going to break anybody's bank. But let's be honest here. We have this going forward, along with the $6 million that we have cut down somewhat of the taxes. So that $250 is all of a sudden $750, $800, maybe $1,000 a year. Now we're talking a big chunk of change. So, yeah, we'd like to get behind this, but I tell you what, I'm not feeling it right now. I'm really concerned.
I can't disagree with you, ma'am. We have a $19 trillion debt at the federal level, and a billion-dollar debt at the state level. I mean, at some point, it has to, we have to make up for that. But I couldn't agree more.
So, Kevin, is what you, it's a quick, because we want to wrap this up.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor this, but I was still asked to let this thing move forward. Let the taxpayers decide on this. I'm not going to say what your job is, but I mean, as a council, you care about the taxpayers, and it's also caring about the town. The town needs to move forward. You have economic plans coming forward, too. If we have better schools, then maybe we pick up our tax bases a lot higher, too, with economic development and other things, and more people moving in and filling these schools. So it isn't just the school. It becomes the whole town. And I really, even if you don't like it, I would still ask you to let it go forward, and let the taxpayers do that. Let planning come up with their doing. And maybe this can be a town in a couple of years that it really shows promise and development, instead of shooting everything down.
So we're going to move forward from here? So it sounds to me like nothing's going to, obviously, nothing's going to happen tonight. But I think we need to regroup in two weeks and have it on the agenda again, and...
We'll have more answers, John.
And have some answers, and Mark?
Yeah, I think, oh, I think we have a couple of weeks. I, you know, I haven't, I think if the council has some questions, or if anybody has some questions, if you could let us know. I'm not, I really don't have questions. My thought is that we probably all need to think about, okay, what do we think this will be successful or not? But if there are questions that we need either our consultant or staff to kind of come up with some response to, I'd like to get those sooner as opposed to later. And I don't, if it's really more of, okay, now that everybody kind of has the same baseline of information, has his best understanding of what happened in Hartford, and that, you know, that brass ring has gone by us. And we need a little bit of time to kind of sort out our thoughts as to whether or not to move ahead. I don't know that we need to wait two weeks, but I don't, I don't know if there's another date.
Well, I mean, we only have six councils here, so we're not going to do anything tonight without...
Well, I'm not suggesting tonight, but instead of waiting two weeks, is there another date beforehand? Maybe going to a Board of Ed meeting and continuing the discussion next Monday, or the following Monday? I understand, I'm not advocating, I'm not pushing for a decision tonight. It's just, as opposed to waiting two weeks, two weeks turns into four weeks, turns into five weeks for some action.
Yeah. But I think that we, I mean, if it's, if it's in the council, if the council agrees, we can, we can get together with the Board of Education and, if need be, you know, I can, and, you know, hash it out, and everyone can come up with an opinion of how they feel about it, and we can see if it's a go, you know? So if there's a, if there's a meeting date that we can...
Monday, the 16th of May. There's a finance committee meeting, and we can certainly put this on the agenda.
Are people available on the 16th?
Do not.
Because our regular Board of Ed meeting is, we do a lot of that meetings. And so we're just, it's just two...
Can't do the 23rd.
Yeah, just...
Okay. Well, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. I'm just trying.
But absolutely, 16th would be enough.
This is, I just think this is so, I think it's critical. I mean, I want to...
Yeah, I would like to agree.
I think this is one of those times in history where we're voting on, everyone keeps saying, talking about the budget this year. This is 60 years of schools. So we're not, we'll be long gone, and the schools will still be standing. So we've got to remember that. Even though it sounds like a huge amount of money, you take the 60 years and divide that, it's, you know, what are we getting for it? And how much are we going to pay if we don't do, if we do to zero? And we all know the answer to that. And my property value is lower, because I have a neighbor that wants to sell his house, because when he bought, his kid was walking to Clough Chester. They bought, she walked to Clough Chester the first year, and she was done with that. So you're not going to get a person to buy my next, my house again, next to me, because their plan was to go to that neighborhood school. So that...
Yeah, but they're also talking about, but they're talking about maybe closing some neighborhood.
No, no, I know.
So, I just...
No, I get that, but that was part of the lore of that house. And maybe, maybe the fact that they've moved, I talked to one person that moved five schools in six years, and then went to New London.
Yeah.
And said, at least I know I'll be at the Isaac School, and then at least I know I'll go to the high school. It's pretty, it's pretty traumatic for a kid to switch five, five times in five grades. I mean, I thought she was lying, because it seemed like impossible, but it's what happened.
But it looks like we're trying to figure out the date. So I know, Council Barber, you can't make Monday.
I can, I mean, I'm available.
But I think that, we don't know about three councils that aren't here. The 17th is not good for, for you guys. The 18th is a Wednesday. The 17th...
Oh, 17th, no, we're in negotiations.
Negotiations. The 18th is Wednesday.
17th is an association.
The 18th is a Wednesday night?
The 18th, maybe we have a few, not great.
Come again?
We had that AJA, GJA...
Oh, we can come back to it.
Yeah, yeah.
What time is that at?
Well, it actually starts at like 4:30. We certainly meet at 6:30 or...
Okay. So why don't we...
Or Park Four. 18.
Park Four?
So why don't we plan on the 18th at 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock on the 18th.
You won't be here?
RTM budget. But that's fine, that's fine.
Well, yeah, but Mark's important.
5:30. Is 6 o'clock?
What time is your meeting? Seven.
Okay, 5:30.
We have that meeting typically at a restaurant.
Yeah.
I don't know if I could be there.
Mark, what if we moved it at the Senior Center at 6, in one of the rooms? You can have an hour.
They're meeting at Park Four. That's a truck.
Okay, so why don't we try for 6? At the Senior Center, in a side room, and Mark will be able to...
Sorry?
Wednesday, the 18th at 6, at the Senior Center.
We could do that.
Okay. Does that sound good?
You know, not everyone's going to be able to match up.
So Nikki will...
What do you got, John?
You'd kind of know, we're going to fall anyway.
No.
Just put it to the voters.
I can post it.
All right, so Nikki will post, 6 o'clock on the 18th of May.
And, Mark, that's okay with you, the Senior Center, you'll be able to...
I'll be right there.
Okay.
I touched on this before. I think, I think this is often lost. I think we, people watching the process, take it as a given that some folks get together and do stuff, and something happens, it doesn't happen, they approve, they don't approve. And it is not a given. It is not a given that enough dedicated people with brains and some common sense actually get together and stick to something as long as these people have, no matter what. What you think of the ultimate product, whether you like the idea of the single-mill school, don't like it, whatever, there is no denying, this is not a given. What John and his group have done is professional grade. They've provided us with a ton of information, there's a lot to digest, we admit that. It did not have to be that way. It could very easily have been a different community, and a whole clown car kind of a process. It's been handled very, very well. My hat's off to you. All my hats.
On behalf of the whole team, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, John. Thanks, everybody, sir.
I'll do the oath, Mom.
But it's true. I can imagine the towns mentally incapable of running through any of this. Nobody has to volunteer. Say, well, let's do it against them other times. Who's going to volunteer for this? I think we'll...
I just don't know.
I don't know why I'm sitting here.
What was I thinking?
Well, you write your text now. It's the number that you're putting the explanatory text with.
Hot mic.
The prices are going to change. No, but if the tax bill, but we can drop it any time. Well, you still, you've got to vote on something, you know, what the tax...
We're going to keep this meeting going. Sorry, everybody, just exiting, but... 9 o'clock. So the next item on the agenda is State Department of Transportation I-95 signage initiative. And so we'll welcome John and Paige to the dais, or whatever it is, the table.
It's not a U.
Not a U, it's a no. And so the, I believe that it came about at a, at a, the Groton Business Association meeting, or Mystic Chamber, or the Mystic Merchants had caught wind that the sign program is being looked at by the state, and that there was a council resolution that was passed, I think in 1988 or 1989, that requested that no signage be placed on I-95 at exit 89. And it had to do with, it came from the neighbors, it came from a bunch of different places. And you guys are here tonight, representing everybody from the town perspective, the, well, I should say, everybody from the business side. The Groton Business Association is here, the Mystic Merchants are here, the Mystic Chamber is here, all represented, all care a great deal about this. I know that all of the councils have received numerous emails, both pro and con, regarding this issue. It's quite a hot-button issue. So I know, why don't you guys give a little background? And then I know Council Barber wants to read something from Council Noll, and then we'll go from there.
Great. Thank you very much. So first, staff, we're looking at this, and we are requesting the council to approve allowing signage referencing Mystic at exit 89 on 195. As you stated, this has been going on for a little while. It's something that the towns had been reached out to by DOT just a couple of months ago, looking at a sign plan from the Gold Star Bridge to the Rhode Island Line. We, the town, have been working with the COG and the surrounding municipalities to get a handle on this. And the Allen Street issue came up in a meeting just a couple of weeks ago, that this is something that can be addressed now. Without such an approval, Connecticut DOT will only sign a reference to Mystic, only through exit 90 at Stonington, and this includes the newly proposed Detraction Panel signs, so showing what is actually there. So as I said, DOT approached Groton, said they were doing this project. The goal of the project overall is to replace all signage and supports due to the age, the loss of reflectivity, new designs, and federal location requirements. Something that we also have to keep in mind is that I-95 is signage designated for interstate travelers, not necessarily our everyday folks that are just doing our local driving needs. We know the local roads. The sign replacement project is a $9 million capital investment at 100% state funding. The state schedule looks to have all the signs improved and installed by early 2017. As I said, town staff have been reviewing plans and comments over the past few weeks. And the deadline for getting comments to Connecticut DOT is May 20th. They've set a very hard date with that. That date, we just learned very recently. While staff is addressing the other sign comments for other exits within town, exit 89 signage matter requires council action. Without council action, DOT will maintain the status quo position based on our previous decision, that previous referendum, that, sorry, that resolution from 1989, prevented reference to Mystic at the exit, despite this being a viable route to downtown Mystic for many Route 95 travelers.
I think it's important to realize that the roadways we're dealing with are both federal and state roadways. That includes I-95. It also includes State Route 614, also known as Allen Street, and it leads to State Route 1. There's no local ownership or maintenance of those roads. They're all state assets. These roadways were designed, the federal and also state roadways, were designed and constructed for volumes of traffic that are much higher than local traffic alone. Due to council's support over the past year especially, we've really ramped up our economic development efforts, and I think we're making more progress in moving forward. And that's taken a lot of significant financial time and resources, and there'll be more moving forward. The market analysis, which you know, was recently completed. It actually gives some very specific recommendations for implementation. And that was a basis for much of our budget request as well. And that includes marketing, promotion, a dedicated economic development website, and also community signage, more at the local level. But it's important to know, we've had, we have that local community signage project that we've targeted that actually kind of marries with this I-95 signage project as well. Exit 90, exit 89 Mystic signage would provide an immediate benefit to Mystic, and also the businesses that are located there. And that would be without the use of any local funding. So as you, as I just alluded to, we are allocating local funding for economic development, but this project would require no local funding. It's simply a decision that we would support this initiative at this location. We've mentioned in the past that Groton has been quite fortunate in growing with larger company growth, and that in the future, we anticipate the largest growth will come from basically the sum of small and medium-sized businesses. And that's exactly what you're seeing in Mystic. Mystic is a hotbed of growing businesses. There were concerns a few months ago over the winter that we had some vacancies. Moving into the summer, we're looking quite good. And this is, Mystic is a village, a community, that other locations would love to try to mimic and create. It's not an easy thing to do, and we have it here. And I think what we're tasked in doing is trying to grow it and foster its success. Although some residents are concerned about using the word, or the name Mystic at exit 89, there are a large number of individuals and businesses and organizations that do indeed support adding the word Mystic at that location. They recognize its benefit, and some are here this evening. We would envision this I-95 signage project to basically be something close to a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. opportunity. It probably won't happen again for another 30-plus years. And we believe that it should be supported, and that it would actually complement our local efforts as well to improve our image, our brand, and local signage.
Thank you, Paige. Councillors, actually, that's it. Barber?
Councilor Knoll could not be here, so she sent me an email and asked me to read it. Said, "Thank you to the many of you that have contacted me to support or oppose this proposal from DOT that will be improving signs all along Route 95, which will improve the lives of tourists and those who are coming here to spend their hard earned dollars in hopefully our town. Never before have we had the need to grow the grand list, fill empty stores, and encourage visitors to both exit 89 and exit 90 while visiting our historic and beautiful town. This will help our businesses and will be paid for by the state. I also live right downtown on Pearl Street. Like many of you who are protesting this, I am impacted when the bridge is up, but that is also what makes our town unique. I am also very tired of the empty storefronts in the burned-out central block. There are many supporters at the public budget hearing to endorse the Economic Development Department's plan and budget to grow the grand list and get rid of empty schools. The Economic Development Department came to me because of my liaison seat on the Economic Development Commission wanting us to support this signage on Route 95 for exit 89 to Allen Street. The Groton Business Association and downtown Mystic Merchants also came to me for support because I am a member of these associations. I am a member because I strongly believe in economic growth and feel that that will be our only way to keep our storefronts filled, our taxes down, and keep folks living in our town. I strongly support this plan to get businesses in the town and the city of Groton. We need this. From a traffic and safety management plan, two main arteries versus one to help let tourists into town is important. Instead of completely bottlenecking Route 27 in the summer, there was a tremendous outpouring of support at the public hearing on the budget supporting Economic Development Department's plans to grow our businesses by streamlining and rewriting the zoning regulations. We completely supported them." My, okay, and that's pretty much it.
All right, thank you. Councillors?
Can I just put my two cents?
Absolutely.
Okay. I am glad that you brought up that Allen Street is a state road because that was probably my biggest fight about this. It's a state road, and it dumps into Route 1 that is also another state road. I happen to be a traveler, and I like that there are signs to tell me where I'm going when I do travel. And my, my opinion is, Route 95 from Maine down to Florida, there should be one of those signs at every single exit. That's my opinion. I would also like to see and ask you, if you're looking into exit 88 also, maybe put Bluff Point on there or something else, and put some of our other unique things that we have to offer. Has that been in the conversation?
Yes, we're looking at all of the exits within the town of Groton, within this, and also that dump out onto the city of Groton, so we're working with them. We will be talking and identifying things like Bluff Point and our other great resources in town. The one that we're focusing on here tonight again is Allen Street, just because of that old town council resolution. Without you rescinding that, we can't do anything.
Gotcha.
Councilor Morton, then Councilor Antivas, then Councilor Grimm, and then Joe.
Yes, I, I just wanted to say, I live in Mystic as well, and I totally support a change in the signing. I think we've done an injustice to all of the businesses that are located in Mystic because there are just so many great businesses that are down there that people have no idea that even exist. They all get off in Stony, on the Stonington side of the river, and they never venture up. And I'm, I'm very skeptical that there's going to be a massive increase in, in the amount of traffic because my husband and I do a lot of traveling. We love going everywhere we go, if, if possible, we always go by car. We use the GPS, and the GPS will direct you the most direct route. So anybody coming into our area from out of town who doesn't know Mystic is probably gonna get off at exit 89 even though there's no sign there because the GPS tells them to. So I don't, I don't necessarily think that it's gonna result in a huge influx of traffic just for out-of-town visitors.
Councilor Antivas?
Thank you. Someone's gonna be ticked tonight. There's no way to avoid that. Don't kid yourselves, you're gonna be ticking somebody off. So here's my two, three, four, five cents.
You will be too, won't you?
We'll get to it.
All right.
I'll start with this. I'm a little concerned about how we got here. I might have missed something, it happens a lot. But I first heard about this when I got a couple of emails on Thursday afternoon. I said, "Look at this, they, this, the GBA is saying that something's gonna be on our agenda on Tuesday." And sure enough, in Saturday's package, there it is. And I saw in GBA's email, which is very informative, that the merchants better get out there and talk to us before the residents get a hold of us, because the residents are gonna be out in force. I wanna know, especially since it kinda looks, I don't know, that like the planning memo, the documents that are in here look like they, it looks like everybody's been on board with this, knows that this is on the agenda, except for the residents. Now, obviously, some residents have heard about it, thank goodness for, for a grapevine. But I find it interesting that the other people, the other population that's gonna be affected by this, wasn't part of the coordination process. And I know why, because the expectation would be that they'll say what their forebears said back in the 70s when Allen Street, then the Allen Street extension was first proposed, would say the same thing, "Not in my backyard." I got that one. This is an ancient kind of a struggle. But it would have been nice if there was something other than a very casual, "Well, maybe the residents will hear about it." Because let's face it, the proponents of the plan don't wanna hear from the residents. They say they wanna hear from the residents, no they don't. Because what they want is they want this. This is supposed to be a good thing. And if you remove the residents from the picture, of course, it's a beautiful thing, it's a no-brainer. It is not a no-brainer. A disclosure, I live on Payer Lane, that feeds right into Allen Street. But I'm not the only one. I could recuse myself and say, "Well, this affects me personally." Yeah, it does, but there are also over 100, just, just the abutting property owners. You're looking at over 100 residential properties that are affected by that, not counting, you know, down the, down the stream, down, down Edgecombe and places like that, and Library. So it isn't just me. When Allen Street went in, in the 70s, yeah, there was, there was an attempt, that was an impromptu, it was called Trees, and they tried to stop it, and it was all part of the environmental movement and all that. Got that one. What people remember from that was that, and I saw it expressed in a couple of emails, there was sort of an expectation that the resistance would drop if there was this concession. A couple of the concessions were this. One, there wouldn't be a lot of development on Allen Street. So there are properties that front Allen Street that are not allowed that frontage on Allen Street. There were some exceptions. But the other one, the other major one that people remember, that they carry in their memories, is no sign on 95 that tells you this is the way you get to downtown Mystic. So put your road in, but don't sign it. Okay. That was part of the, that, whether that's true or not, whether it was truly a legal concession between the Trees Group and the state, I don't know. But this is how people remember it. So they see this, and they say, "Aha, somebody's reneging it." So there's that that colors this. That's apart from that. Apart from that. It's been said, "Well, you're not gonna have a lot of extra traffic because people go there with their GPS anyway." Well, okay, if that's true, but I've got nothing to worry about, my neighbors have got nothing to worry about, I can still make left turns when I can make left turns, I don't need a traffic light, my kids aren't gonna get hit. But the presumption is that the signage will increase traffic, so I'll go with that. I'll go with that. So we've all gotten the emails, and we've heard about, well, noise, okay. Accidents, got 'em. I don't know that you're gonna, that's not gonna stop. I mean, Allen Street is a busy, is a busy road. And yes, it is kind of a highway. I mean, I would liken it to some degree to the Hammond Acid Connector. When you get off 95, there really isn't much, once you go past Sandy Hollow, it looks like a little highway, until you get to the old part of Allen Street, or they tell you to step down to 25. And you know why the cops sit there? Because people don't do 25. They weren't doing 45 to begin with. That's why you can hand out tickets all to Live Alone Day. Because the first time people say, "Holy crap, I'm in a residential neighborhood," is when they, they, they hit that little stoplight. And some people have said, sometimes they don't even stop. People on, on, and we don't have sidewalks for a long length of Allen Street, there is no way to cross unless you go all the way down, and you've gotta walk along Allen Street. It's, it's not like 27. Traffic is controlled on 27 because there are attractions, there are stops, there is traffic. People get off 95, they will zoom down Allen Street until they hit something, stop sign, a light, and hopefully not my kid. As it is, we've got families on either side. I'll allow my 15-year-old to cross, but I will not allow my 12-year-old to cross. My 15-year-old can cross because there are gaps. Even in the summer, you can find a gap where there isn't a car coming this way, there isn't a car coming that way. If there's increased traffic, as the merchants expect, that's an if, there won't be a gap. We will be, we will be cut off, the residents will be cut off. It'll be, it'll be like we, we joke at the Cape, you just don't make a left onto Route 28 or Route 6A, you know, in the summertime, you just don't do that. That's what Allen Street's gonna turn into. You're gonna have to put a light in, of course, at least state-funded, you have to put a light in that, that intersection, which is already a little messy, but people can tolerate it, where you've got the 95 interchange and Sandy Hollow Road. With, if increased traffic comes in, you'll definitely have to see a light there. But here's another thing I don't see addressed anywhere in the documents that we've been given. People coming in are gonna say, "I'm not gonna wait. I mean, I don't wait till I get to downtown Provincetown to find parking. I'm gonna try to find parking before I get to the mess." People will be heading down Allen Street, but again, this is presuming additional traffic. And they'll say, "Well, I'm not gonna wait till I get to downtown, that's gonna be a mess." They may even see a backup. They'll go find parking someplace else. People will park on, they'll park on the residential streets. I don't think there are any signs that say, "No parking." Right now, apart from parade days, like Memorial Day or St. Patrick's Day, where you do see cars parked even up till Allen Street, I think if the increased traffic comes through, you will see people parking in neighborhoods, driving through neighborhoods, looking to avoid the tie-up that you're gonna get at that light with, with Allen Street and Route 1. People will make that left turn, they're making them anyway. They'll go down Edgecombe and so on. It's going to be, it's going to be a mess, and I don't see this addressed anywhere. And I feel a little harried that I've gotta think about this, that we have to think about this, right now, or else it'll be 30 years. Holy smokes, how many times do we have things like this to, this kind of a time to think about? Like I said, it may be a no-brainer for some other people. And I can say, "Well, yeah, you say, you say what you're saying because you live there." It isn't just me. Read some of the emails. Nobody from my neighborhood has written in. You know why? Because I haven't gone out and solicited anything. I could've. They don't know. And if they knew, you'd get another pile of emails from those people. I think they have to count for something. To me, as I sit with incomplete information, the history, the complaints, the pros and the cons, is it an experiment? Let's see what happens? What'll hap, can you take the sign down afterwards? I don't know. So the merchants may get an increase. I don't think that's why the fire block, the so-called fire block, isn't being built. I don't think that's why we have a couple of empty storefronts downtown. But that's not me. I drive through there all the time, it's a pain, I live there, I know. So that's on the one hand. You've got a potential benefit for the merchants versus a certain negative experience for the people that actually live there. And so where I sit right now, I've gotta come down against this thing.
Thank you. Councilor Grimm?
Thanks. Just a couple of questions. I'm a little confused why the council even has jurisdiction over controlling the signs on 95. I mean, I don't know the history of how that resolution got passed, but it doesn't even seem like it'd be a legal thing for us to be voting on. Yeah.
They want us to be the bad guy.
Yeah, it's a, it's an interstate, dumps off onto a state highway, you know? How do we fit in the picture?
State agencies usually like to look to the host municipality and help them along or hear their preference. This certainly predated my time working for the town. I think I was in elementary school, but, but maybe middle school. But still, it's, it's something that, right now, DOT has said in no uncertain terms, "We will not change anything until the council rescinds that old resolution," which I'm not even sure of, of resolution from 1989 is still even valid with your current council, because that was a policy of an older council, but, I mean, that, that's your own rules.
Well, Mark?
Well, I mean, I wasn't here in 1989, actually. But, you know, I think you raise a very good point. Even earlier this year, on a sister signage project, I got a call from DOT asking, "Was I okay for it?" And the guy, basically, I told, I took him through the history as I, this is on the little sign that was put up, directional sign for the art association. And I just was trying to give him a heads up. He was probably even younger than John, had no background. And ultimately, he was looking for me to sign off. I, I wouldn't sign off because of that reason. It's a state initiative. And oh, by the way, I found out, they couldn't say no anyway, so why were they even bothering to call me? But that's a different issue, and some of the emails that you have in your packet references that. But I, I think the underlying issue here is, when, when Allen Street was in the planning stages, and I wasn't here, but the legacy and the comments that people have expressed to me over the years when I first started working for the town is, there was some agreement, understanding, I've never seen it in writing, but, but in order to get the street built, there appears to have been what people perceived to either be promises, or an understanding, or whatever, that Allen Street would, you know, would not say downtown Mystic. Now, of course, when Allen Street was planned, and when it was built, downtown Mystic isn't the downtown Mystic as we know now. But there, there seemed to be at least this urban legacy, but I think it was more than that. I truly do think there was some understanding. So something moving forward to 1989, something must have been going on in 1989. And DOT either approached the town, or the town approached DOT and passed a resolution. You know, this is a state road, and normally the state does. I haven't had exactly the same experience as John has had. With DOTs, they basically do what they want. But this is a lightning rod issue, there's no doubt about it. This simply got to, to address maybe in part some of Dean's concerns or obstinate. This was not on the agenda until Friday of last week, Dean. There was an EDC meeting in which a counselor, I don't know that she tracked me down, but she came over to the RTM meeting Thursday night wanting this item added to the agenda. I simply asked her, "Have you talked to the mayor? Please talk to the mayor." We had an exchange of emails through half the evening. Came in on my day off to get the agenda revamped on Friday. So there's, certainly from a town staff standpoint, I, I don't know what email you got from, from the GBA or whatever, I certainly...
Oh, it said, "Everybody be here tonight." Even though I, there was a misunderstanding about the procedure tonight.
I certainly did not get it Thursday. It was simply a request from a counselor to add something to the agenda.
Well, it remains my point, the GBA knew this was gonna be on the agenda before I did.
They may have been at the EDC meeting. I don't know what.
Right, I mean, I know that's where that started.
But anyways, this is a great point, but I think the fact that the, the state has honored the town's request that was issued in 1989, which in my opinion is still in force, it'd be pure chaos if every two years, every action that a council took dissipated. So I believe they look at it as still is the desire of the town unless we tell them otherwise. And I, I think it's a fair request, but I, you know, this is, this is purely a policy decision. I can't even tell you what the issue was in 1989. I, I truly don't know. Booming economy, there may have been a lot of stuff going on in downtown Mystic, and it's come up many times since then, many, many times over the years. The, there's certain business interests and others have, have wanted signage. And the council, I think, has considered some of them in the past and decided not to... And the council, I think, has considered some of them in the past and decided not to change.
Right. But I think it's more than a policy issue because we're talking about traffic and safety, and we want an answer by May 20th. So, has there been any, any studies or discussion to, to that effect?
No, there have been no studies by DOT. They are looking at this purely from a policy issue. That, that's the direction we've gotten of, "Do you want it to be signed or do you not want it to be signed?" I, I, again, we haven't done a traffic study. If it's something that warrants one, that's something we can request of DOT. I try not to make assumptions on things. They're state roads. They were built to a certain standard. I, I don't know the, the roadway capacity of the traffic of, of Allen Street and that off-ramp, but I would, I'd make a, a judgment that it's higher than what it is being utilized at right now.
And this is only one sign we're talking about? I mean, the, the rest of the redesign can go forward? Is it just the exit 89 sign that's not going to say Allen Street, it's going to say Mystic now?
Well, that's up to you. So, is the exit 89 both going south and going north, DOT is looking for direction from us?
So, you're just coming to us for that particular sign?
Correct.
None of the other signs?
Correct. I mean, if, if you want to have input on it, feel free to...
You have all the maps on it as part of your packet. It, it does get a little confusing looking at them, but if you, if you spend enough time looking, I think you can figure out what, what's existing versus what's proposed. There's a few instances where there's some different alternatives being provided. Certainly, if the council, you know, we're just, we're at staff level, we're simply trying to take advantage of this opportunity that is presenting itself because, like it or not, this is probably, whatever we end up with is probably a 30-year life. Many of the signs on I-95 and 395 are in terrible shape. You can barely read them at night. So, this is a tremendous opportunity, but change is tough. There's no doubt about it. You know, I, I think though, certainly if any of you have any suggestions for any of the signs, there are some kind of new rules, or at least new to me desires that DOT has. They don't, on, on the one hand, they seem to be saying that they want to direct, no matter if you're going north or south, they want to direct everybody to the same exit. You know, and for example, if you're coming from New London, if you want to get off at Downtown Groton, you take the exit right after the bridge. But if you're coming from Providence and you want Downtown Groton, you're taking Route 117. They seem, and I haven't really had a chance to, to talk much with John and Paige about, they seem to be saying they want to put everything at one exit, but here we are talking about Mystic, and it's all at one exit now, exit 90. But they seem to be receptive to, to changing it if, if that's the desire of the council. So, it's been a learning curve. None, I've never been through a project like this before. DOT staff has been great. You know, I, they initially sent out letters and just thought we were all just going to blindly sign on the bottom line without any explanation or, or without any community discussion. And we've scrambled to put a couple of those, or to make ourselves available for those meetings and ask for them. And we've really, you know, we've really got two universes we're working in, the Mystic universe and working with Stonington and all the attractions on that side of the town. And then the City of Groton, New London universe, maybe Waterford a little bit too. So, there's been a couple sets of meetings been going on over the last couple of weeks to, to try to be responsive to DOT.
Council Dela Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a few things. I, I think they could change the signage on the highway where, to me, the, the worst economic hurdle that we have to, to, to cross is that all the, all the accidents at the same exact spot on 95 that they never resolve, which creates chaos in my neighborhood and, and Allen Street neighborhood. But it's where that goes into from three lanes to two lanes. Hopefully, they, they correct that and give like better warning ahead of time because that is, and I don't know if you've lived through it. I know you, you've been here recently, but it's accident, maybe two or three a year that just stops Groton altogether. As far as the, the 89 goes, I, I compare it to casinos. I mean, if you're coming down 95 from Ma, 395 from Massachusetts, it says the best way to Foxwoods is to go Route 32 to 95 to exit 90. That's really not the best way. We all know that. And I don't want to scare the residents saying it's, you're not going to have casino traffic. I mean, they don't have a stadium down in, in Mystic. There's not a big baseball stadium where it's going to be that kind of traffic, but it probably will be more steady. But it's not like there's big events going on at the same time, other than the parade, and everybody knows that route also. But I, I would even add to, as far as suggestions go, I've been saying this for a while. I was thinking about the high school all the time as a, as a place to bring people to Mystic. Well, the exit 88 has a park and ride. We have senior buses that, that don't operate on Saturday and Sunday for the most part. We at least have a spare one. We could have one person drive a bus from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Exit 88 would say, "Park and ride, free, free bus," just like we do, just like we do in Newport. It's usually two bucks in Newport, but we're a small community, man. We can do it for free for now. But with, you'd park cars in that park and ride, and people would just bring the bus down to Downtown Mystic, and maybe it would go from the park and ride to the Heritage Park and then back to the park, back and forth, which we already own the bus.
How about the trolley?
Yeah, the trolley. But we, so that bus is owned already, air-conditioned, good to go. That's something I would love to see. Exit 88, park and ride, May, you know, Labor Day. And I really think that would help because if people think they can park and they don't have to find their way to Mystic, then the bus, it'll help the bus driver because he knows how to get downtown with that sign up. I think it'd all be, I think it'd be good. So, I'm not against it. I, I know, I, I still don't like the way the state operates. You know, this is last minute, and we have to make the decision now, and it's, and we don't get to make it again for 30 years. It seems, that's the way they operate everything, so we have to live within their parameters. But to make a, a quick decision, I would, I would say, put the sign up. Especially, we're getting direction from our planning department that really, I would say, has been a huge bright spot in the town because it's all we hear is how great you guys are doing, and I appreciate it. But I, I'm for it. I'm not going to talk forever about it, but if they can do that exit, exit 88 thing, and, and the block point sign is going to make my neighborhood clogged up too. I mean, it is what it is. I don't think it's a great signage for it now, but if they increase that signage and it says, "Hey, this is the exit," that's, I live on 117, well, right off of it. And I understand, but, but, you know, we are, we are in different times, and we want people to come to our town and, and kind of spend their money here. So, I'm all for it.
Thank you. I have a couple of points here I'd like to make, but it seems to me that there's a lot of people who never find Downtown Mystic, especially if they get off at exit 90. I've, I've been told a number of times that people end up stopping at Old Mystic Village and thinking that's Mystic, and never know we have a bridge and never know that there are shop owners downtown. So, from that standpoint, I think that the downtown merchants deserve that, their due. To, to Dean, to your point about the neighborhood, we, we've seen it a couple of times in the last couple of years. We start with William Sealy School. You know, the neighbors who live by William Sealy are concerned about what's going to happen to the school. And this council voted to sell that property and have it developed at the, I'm not using these words, but at the expense of the neighborhood. We looked at it at Knowing School. The only reason, really, in my eyes, that Knowing School didn't get developed was because they have their own zoning. And so, you know, if, I've received a number of letters from the people who live along, they know Allen Street and, and West Mystic, and some of the points are, are valid, especially, they become more valid as the closer you live to the area that's going to be affected. I also happened to be in a meeting this morning with Mark and asked the chief of police, just off the cuff, what he thought about adding the signage to exit 89 and what it would do to traffic. And he said, that was very interesting. He said he was, he thinks the signage should be there. And he also said that he thought that the increased traffic would actually slow down the road and make it a little bit safer because people wouldn't be, wouldn't have the ability to speed through. There would be traffic in front of them and behind them, and so it would slow them down. My thoughts are that I think we should, I think we should put the signage there, but I think we should be respectful to the neighborhoods and see what we can do to, to ease the pain. So, as examples, I think, I, I don't know how the DOT operates, but I would send the letter that we want to lift the restriction, but talk to them about how we move forward. Like, if we have to give the restriction lifting by May 20th, then send the letter saying we're going to lift the restriction. But then have discussions and figure out, you know, how we're going to move forward with it. I think that, that the, that like, we should be able to direct people to parking. So, if people are going to get off at 89, it needs to be clearly signed where they, you know, they go straight, take a left on Route 1, take a right on, you know, 215 or whatever, you know, whatever the street is, and, and park into the parking there. We also need to make sure that there's enough spaces in the parking lot to accommodate what could be additional parking. And if there are, you know, from the museums side, if there are people who are, like, I don't know, maybe a bunch of employees park in there, I would say that we'd have to have some kind of program where there, the employees can't park in that lot, especially if we're going to be increasing the amount of cars that are going to be parking down there. Because the last thing we want is for a car to pull into Downtown Mystic and not know where to go and end up going to the next exit and heading out because they couldn't find parking. I think also that, I, I received a call from Mike Spellman, Selectman in Stonington. And, you know, it's gotten their attention too because the cars get off at, at 27 and there's a number of businesses along that route that are the benefit of that traffic, and they don't want to lose that traffic. Maybe there's ways to, I, I think one of the things I read about in the letter from the DOT was, it said that there'd be additional signage for the aquarium and the seaport prior to exit 89 so people knew not to get off at 89 for the seaport and the aquarium, and they know to go the next exit. So, I think a lot of it's communication. I think there's a lot of benefits for putting the signage up, and I would support it, but I would support it, looking at the respect of the neighbors and trying to figure out the best way. Because, I mean, the, the, the streets leading there have sidewalks. I think one issue that's been brought up to us before is the crossing at Route 1, how that you can only cross the street, I'm going to say the Groton side of the intersection, that on Route 1 going towards Mystic, there's no crosswalk there. You have to, you have, there's only two ways to cross out of the four places to cross. So, I think they wish, we should, you know, look at increasing the crosswalks there if traffic's going to be increased. But I think these are all talk for later. I think the bottom line is to try to get that, that waiver lifted and then figure out, you know, how, which is the best way to accommodate everybody. So, that was one too.
Council Morton and Council Antipas?
Well, I think maybe the first step is then, I'd like to make a motion that we rescind the, whatever resolution was filed by the town, approved by the town council with regard to Allen Street. Second?
Great. We have a motion and a second to rescind the motion. Is there further discussion in this? Council Antipas?
Well, you, you referenced, Mayor, the two schools, Knowing and, and William Sealy. And I think we acknowledged, especially in the case of William Sealy, that unlike in the case of the Knowing School, there was no reused task force or anything like that that could have been handled frankly better. Whether the residents would have been happy in the end with the decision or not is another question, but I think we recognize there was a flaw in the process and a first seeking their, their input. This is precisely the problem that I have here. I'm not saying that if everybody had been given notice ahead of time, it was public information and so on and so forth, and we had the luxury of time, that the residents would walk away satisfied that everything was going to go just A-OK. But I think they don't appreciate, in fact, there are people sitting at home tonight, no TV on, don't know this is going on. I haven't gone out and told anybody because I didn't think it was proper.
Sorry, I did, I did go out, because we, we heard a number of people who wrote us about the museum signs, and those people, I, I did let them know out of respect for them that there was being discussed and that we've received letters from them. So, it's not a complete dark, it's not complete darkness on this.
All right. Unlike in those situations, the only people, the only people who are going to bear the cost of this are the residents. There's no cost to the town, as you vaguely pointed out. Everything's going to be great until you're one of those people that winds up never being able to make a left turn. You're one of those people that, I mean, we, we will be on our side. We will be cut off from the rest of Mystic. It'll be a highway. If, if what they want goes through, which is increased traffic, it'll be a highway, and it won't be Route 27. It'll be a highway. It'll be the Hammond Asset Connector. So, I'm going to continue to vote no on this thing. I'm very mindful of the needs of the businesses, but I have, somebody has to, has to say something on behalf of the residents who don't want this. I happen to be among them, but I'd be saying it anyway because nobody else is apparently.
Thank you. Council Dela Cruz?
Just quickly, I want to say, I want to say, I feel like the, the residents should, should kind of have a say, but we are faced with a decision by the state telling us by May 20th, it's a up or a down. I hate the idea of it, but my gut tells me that this is the right thing to do for the, for the, for the businesses downtown for, and I don't think it's going to be the highway that you're anticipating. I think most people that go to, that are going to the Mystic Aquarium are going to Mystic Aquarium. But I think if someone sees the drawbridge and they happen to just be joyriding, they're going to get off and say, "Oh, drawbridge. Mystic Aquarium doesn't mean anything to me. I don't, now I have kids in the car. I'd like to see a drawbridge." And that may bring someone down to that area that may have never, ever been down there. So, I, I don't, I mean, again, I'm not an expert, and I could be completely wrong, and it's going to turn into something crazy, but I don't see that. I think most people go to Mystic Seaport, most people go to, because there is the, all the parkings there. But I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. I think they have to, when you get off, they're going to have to give signage to the big parking lot because they may just drive over the drawbridge and go, "Oh, that was cool," and just keep on driving. So, hopefully, we get that signage correct, but that would probably be on us and then not the state, but that's just small signage. So, I'm, I'm definitely, and it's tough, but I understand, and I understand where you're coming from. We, we're faced with a decision of now or never, and probably shouldn't do it the way it is, but that's what the handle is now.
And I'm mindful of the residents also, and I did get some emails, although I got more emails from people saying, "Please do it." There's all, there's things that we can revisit, right? The blinking light, if necessary, we can ask the state to make it a, a traffic light. Necessary, we can put up another one. I mean, there's, there's options we can do to make sure that the residents are safe because the kids and the residents do have to be safe.
Thank you. Council Grim?
Do we have the language of what we're rescinding anywhere?
We do not yet. It's not in the packet. There's no...
You have the copy of the 1989.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm pretty sure.
Page?
Oh, 1989 was the year I graduated. A lot of strange stuff happened that year.
They never should have let it happen, Joe.
They let me. What?
What grade?
Oh, middle school.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm kidding. High school.
So, there's, you find attachment eight. It, it starts on the first page that you see attachment eight, but it got revised. So, the actual one that formerly got acted on is on the back of that. It says page 12 of those council minutes from May 16, 1989.
So, I think the motion, Council Grim, was to rescind this, this particular... Mark, will that be adequate if we, or John, would that, you know, if we rescind the resolution from 1989, is that...
I, I would suggest that we try to also address some of the other things that you would like to see happen as follow-up items.
Okay.
Sometimes when resolutions are rescinded, it's simply, you know, whereas on May 16, 1989, the council, the then-council passed, we hereby rescind. I took it that there were some other things that, yet to maybe be fully defined, but with conditions, other signage, looking at Route 1 and Allen Street from a pedestrian standpoint, that intersection from the pedestrian standpoint, the blinking light at Library Street.
Council Antipas?
Yeah, there should be a sign telling people that they're going to be sitting in traffic at the bridge. Let them know that on I-95. It's the honest thing to do.
It's going to be one long written sign. I, I'm looking at the, this old, what we're rescinding, what they ask, I mean, what they, what they, that council had come up with was, they didn't want to do it because it would maybe substantially increase traffic and possibly cause confusion. So, there were two reasons. The second reason, it could cause confusion for motorists heading to Mystic Seaport or Marine Aquarium, and I think that's going to be resolved by a larger sign in front of it now, or.
It's going to be addressed.
That's getting addressed with another sign before that exit, so people aren't, like, making that mistake and getting off at the wrong exit, so.
So can we figure out the whereses at a later time and just vote?
We'll have a draft on your agenda for next week, if you consider, I have no doubt.
So we want to vote now on?
Yes.
Given the ability to draft that. So all those in favor of drafting the resolution that will rescind and put forth what we want done with regards to the signage? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? That passes five to one to zero. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And thanks for everybody who came out.
Don't forget our X-88 sign. Oh, that was every.
Now we're all on.
Back to a regular council meeting.
I'm getting a headache.
No one here.
Back, the next item on the agenda is for Genes Court update.
Nothing will clear our room like a hot water.
It's you, Gary.
Down at the tree, I'm playing earlier.
I do leave the council questions on project. I want to get around to any comments. For Genes Court, what I'm passing around is two sketches that we have.
Yeah.
There should be one that shows.
This is a different one.
No, it's one showing the original.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is it? Hold on.
They're together.
Oh, they are? So it's the same one?
It's the same.
There you go.
Well, we need one more down here.
One more down there? There you go. Is it?
Everything looks red to me right now, anyway.
Just, just real quickly, the microphone's on, in 2005, funds were allocated, conceptual design to eliminate.
Yeah, we didn't need it. Mark came over and gave it to me.
And that was done, we did a traffic study, that was done, and FYE 14, funds were approved by both the council and the RTM to design, permit, and to construct to dead-end Virginies Court to Route 1. Plans that you have, what a plan here, Route 1, Claude Chester Schools up here over here, the shopping centers across the street, there is Virginies Court. What we are proposing to do is within the existing right-of-way that we have, which is shown on your plans, on these plans as a red line, is to create the cul-de-sac in this location by extending the sidewalk straight across, taking the asphalt pavement out, putting a proper crosswalk into a nice opening over here across the street, thus removing it there, but still providing access, emergency access, if the other two access points into the Ford Hill area wherever blocked and we, and police and fire needed to get in. So this will still provide a barrier for regular car traffic. Now, the traffic study in 2005, that was done on one day, but at three, three separate times, during the day, morning, afternoon, and night, showed traffic counts leaving the court. They were going, if you're leaving the court and making a left-hand turn, there's 20 movements. There's four movements to the right, which is going to downtown Mystic, and in all cases there were zero movements, traffic movements, going from Virginies Court across the street. What we're doing is providing a safer access or safer traffic management plan through the area here. This is one of the areas that we did apply for a grant, and we did get it from the state to, it was one of the grants to reduce local, to reduce traffic accidents in local areas. So we're using state money to do the construction. We have a 10% match, which is already funded by the council and the RTM. What was done out there, a letter was sent out to the funding property owners, telling them that we will be doing some survey work out there, the common courtesy in that area, and that because this is a federal project, there will be a public information meeting that must be held. And we're looking, I do believe the letter says sometime in the month of June that we have out there. But once the design has been completed and the public information meeting been held, then this will go up to the state for their review, and then if it is, then it will go to construction. So following through with the plan that we had in 2006, traffic management plan, traffic management studies, excuse me, in an area, and then following through with a project that's been previously authorized by the town council and RTM.
Council Morton?
Yes. Gary, what exactly precipitated, I mean, was, was there a lot of accidents? I mean, what precipitated looking at this to begin with?
I may be in a better, I mean, this has been an area that the traffic authority has, has looked at, on again, off again. There was a fatality out here a number of years ago. It, well, we, well, all you have, is my opinion, all I have to do is drive through it and see that it's, it's like a roller derby out there in terms of, you know, the traffic movements, none of the driveways line up. It was purely a safety item, and it was an item also that got looked at with the previous school plan, when, when the proposal was to build a middle school at Claude Chester's site, and trying to improve traffic, and so it's, you know, it's, it's been out there for quite a few years in terms of, geez, what could we do here to improve traffic flow to, to try to minimize the delay in the morning and the afternoon? It's a narrow road, been here long enough to remember that Route 117 and Route 1 intersection where it didn't even have a left-hand turning lane, and that's when North Road was open, you used to have, be able to go around. So I don't know that there was one item, I think it was probably something that got looked at. This whole stretch probably got looked at. We have had numerous discussions with state DOT over the years on improvements to this area, or what could we do, what could they do, what could we do to make some improvements? It probably actually went back to maybe when the park was built, and another traffic light got plopped in on Route 1, and how does that impact, you know, and I think there was also, Gary, correct me, I think at one point the traffic light at Harry Day Drive was just a blinking light
Correct.
at one point, and then that got upgraded, and so I, I think it's a number. I don't think it was one particular event, though the fatality, I think, did catch everybody's attention, that, geez, there's something more that we shouldn't be doing out here. And as Gary made reference to, I mean, even where the, the crosswalk is now, probably isn't in the best location, so that, that would get addressed.
Council Barbara?
Do we know what this is going to do for the traffic on the other entrance into the neighborhood? I forget the name of the street.
There'd be two other access points, which is Central Avenue and Fitch, and the traffic study did take a look at that, because what she didn't want to do is overload those, those areas, and because of the turning movements, only 30, and that was what I quoted before, 30 to the left, 40 to the right, that could be easily handled by those other two, other two locations. And it really is safer going out onto Route 1, because from both of those, it's a traffic signal. If you go up, down Depot Road, you go from Fitch, make a left, right-hand turn, but you're at a traffic signal. So it is, it is safer that way, and, and the state did take a look at, one of the reasons why we got the grant money is they did take a look at their, it's the local road accident, accident reduction program. They looked at all the traffic accidents that were in that area, from fender benders to the fatality, and this met their threshold of providing money to, to do this, to do this improvement.
I'm thinking that the people that live right near this area must love this, because they've taken that road away, so you're not going to see the speeding cars.
It's, it's just anecdotal, but this, my survey crew that was out there said the residents came out and they were, they were supportive, but it's, we didn't take a survey of the, not everyone who showed up.
Yeah, when you're saying 30, you're saying 30 cars an hour, or is that?
Total.
For an entire day, 30 cars out of there?
That was 11 years ago.
Yeah, it really, there really isn't that, there really isn't that much coming out of that one.
Really?
That seems way lower than I would have suspected, but I mean, that's probably, I mean, they put a counter on the ground, right?
They had someone physically, actually physically counting.
And was that like a weekend, or is that a?
It was just one day, Thursday. It was on a Thursday, so they picked the latter part of the week, but they were using standards at that time. You know, me and Mark drive by it all the time, we see a lot more people crossing the street, the walkers that are going to the store, into the Bridge Market and that, versus a car darting across.
And I, I mean, I like the way this looks, what I would hope, and just like in the case of, of anything, like Dean just talked about the sign, you know, I mean, this could, if we could, this could get pinned up at Akley's Store, people could see this thing, and then, then have more of an input from, you know, so it doesn't seem like it's getting jammed on your throat. I mean, we have people who study things and they come up with better ways. I know, by looking at this, every time I stop for a pedestrian, people behind me think I'm trying to take a left into the, into the lot, and then someone comes like flying around me, and you have to, I've actually tilted that way, because there was someone crossing this way and that person didn't see him, because they didn't know, and they didn't know why I was stopping. I would like to add, just, I don't want to add a light, believe me, I don't want another light on Route 1, but there should be just a, some kind of blinking yellow, when someone presses it, it just shows that, maybe a light that comes down and lights up the walk, because really, that is a tough spot, but that may eliminate what I'm talking about, because people do think you're turning in, and they, they come flying around you, and that's probably where the danger part is, but. Oh, Mark, I'm sorry.
This is, I have never, Gary and I, I don't believe have ever talked about this, so, Gary, have you, I mean, it's clear based on what you've handed out, that this used to be a dead-end road at one point.
Right.
Because the land is there for the cul-de-sac. Do you know when it was opened up, or what?
We.
We maybe could look at some old areas.
Well, we'll take a look at some old mapping, that, but at least, none of us could trace back on when, when that was opened up. We, we had looked at doing some improvements on the other side of the road, but now we're getting out to private property, because the state's right-of-way is really right up to the edge there, because there are a lot of driveway openings, that if they were closed, it'd make it a little bit safer, going into the major one and the one on, towards the gas station, but there is one in the middle too, and that's private property. And I know back to when we were doing community development.
Yep.
A program, looking at the whole facade and that whole front, and that was.
Correct. We looked at, we, I think that got referenced when Ms. Good was here, we had come up with a plan to try to clean up the frontage of this shopping center, and then also the other shopping center, the old Cumberland Farms Center on the other side of Depot Road, and unfortunately, we weren't able to get anywhere with the property owners at the time. I think this was owned by the Bartnik family at the time, and Mr. Rispoli owned the other, the other property.
What I can do is, once this is a little bit more finalized than this, we can post it, see if the Bridge Market will, will post it, see if any, any of the other businessers there, and then we'll make, make sure that we post it there is when the public information meeting will be, and it'll probably be held in someplace, either at the library, I would think, because it's right in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So someplace around there, so they don't have to come up here.
Council De La Cruz?
Yeah, no, I think with the presentation to the neighborhood, they may see the value in it, but it's, it's when they don't know, and they say they're just going to do this, and that, that hurts feelings, but I, has, has the business owner seen this at all? Or does he, he must know, he must be part of this somehow, right? Or does he?
Which business?
The Akleys, the strip mall.
Not at this point, no.
They haven't seen that at all?
Not that, well, certainly.
This is in the beginning.
Ms. Good is aware of it, and it was, I did confirm it was talked about at a couple of NRZ meetings quite a while ago, but I, I think getting the sketch up on, you know, at the stores would be helpful.
And this was?
As Gary said, this is a very public process.
It is.
You know, because of the federal dollars.
Right.
And this was drawn just recently, or this is old?
We've had concept plans for.
We had concept plans, but the ink is almost dry on this, it was, it was yesterday.
Beautiful water color.
Yeah, so we colored markers, so we aired them out before.
We actually, there had been a plan a number of years ago to basically make these improvements on a temporary basis to try it out, and I think at the time we had met with Todd Page and so forth, to get his input and adjustment of some Jersey barriers and so forth. So I mean, as I said, and as Gary's, this is, the concept's been around for a long time, many, many years.
Council Antipas?
Yeah, obviously this is a, had to have been a dead end because of the way the house is oriented. Remind me, I don't have my book in front of me, and it's all sort of a bad dream now. This is on the CIP list. This was down for $260,000.
For the construction portion, that's the state portion of the grant.
Right. And we voted for that? There were our own dollars going into that, right? Some of our own dollars?
Previously, there's a previous appropriations would be used for the 10% grant.
And, and did we say yes to that one?
Yes.
Yes. Well, initially, if I remember, initially, this was purely a local project, and the council approved it. We then, there was probably a solicitation by the COG, Council of Governments, for projects, safety projects, and we came to the council, got your authorization to submit the grant, submitted the grant, lo and behold, we got authorization and the funding. There is a match, Gary, 10%.
10%.
10%, so whatever we don't use out of that initial allocation will come back to the, come back to the capital reserve account.
Because if there's any money of ours involved, I cannot imagine we would have said yes, since, for me, anyway, it's not a top priority project. I put, that's a project, so apparently we did.
The council authorized 100% funding of this at one point.
Well, at one point. I'm just saying, in the, in the recent, in the recent season, because.
Gary, when was that?
FYE 14.
In 14, the council approved 100 and something thousand dollars, I forget the dollar amount, but I think it was over $100,000 of local money to do this project.
My predecessors. But this past budget cycle, when it was there in our book, when it said 260, what was the funding, like, because again, I used to have.
And the funding was other, local road accident reduction program.
Okay, so, so if it looked like we weren't going to have to put it up, the bottom line was we voted yes on the thing, right? With a matching?
Twice.
Twice. It just seems, I'm not counting 2014, I'm counting this past budget season, but we didn't seem to be in the mood to spend much of anything on the CIP list.
Well, Gary, it wasn't, it was last year that you approved it.
No, I'm, and I'm, I'm being lazy now, because I could probably go back and look at the stack of papers to figure out how we voted on this particular item. It's my impression that we would have said, nah, this is not top priority, we're not going to spend any money on it, but, okay. It's still not a top priority for me, honestly, but, thank you. Yeah, it's a great idea to toss these things up, they're colorful, people see them, make sure Alan keeps them up though.
I think that's a great idea. Hanging it up down there.
Great idea, gentlemen.
Great idea. It's my best idea tonight.
I wouldn't go that far.
No. Oh, you like my sign, you like my sign thing?
So we, are we, are we informed?
We are informed.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Gary. We, it is 10 o'clock exactly, we have, I think, what are, I knew, I know the grant, grant, appointment to Noang Task Force, those three we probably could tackle pretty easily.
Yep.
Maybe we stop there?
Well, I'm assuming John, unless he bought his Diddy bag and is going to stay overnight in the annex, is probably here for the POCD. You do have copies of the POCD, and you're probably just here to let them know.
Well, I give you 15 seconds to get up, you got one minute.
We're only going to go to chapter six tonight. And that's it.
Basically, all I want to tell you, again, thank you, we've wrapped up the POCD, the public hearing before the planning commission is June 29th, by state law, you have the option of holding a public hearing or not, and you shall make a determination either accepting the POCD or not accepting it, but if you accept it or don't accept it, the planning commission can still adopt it. So if you want to have a public hearing, if you want to have planning staff come before the council, explain the, the big changes and direction we're going with the POCD, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Council Antipas, can you move the historic documents preservation grant?
Certainly. As soon as I get to the.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I got to get past all that Exit 89 and that stuff.
Oh, my God, really?
You'll be on that, no, it's over.
It ain't over till it's over. I'm going to chain myself to a sign on 95.
Attachment 12.
I'll have my camera ready.
This smile brought to you by. Resolution authorizing the town manager to execute and deliver a contract for historic documents preservation grant, that's the one?
Yep.
Okay. Whereas the town of Groton will benefit by the continuance of the historic document preservation program, which will be enabled and enhanced by grant funding. Now therefore be it resolved that Mark R. Offinger, town manager of the town of Groton, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of this municipality a contract with the Connecticut State Library for Historic Documents Preservation Grant. I so move.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, and it appears that there's no matching. Is that right, Mark?
There's no matching.
No matching, right. Great. Any discussion on this? Are those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions. That passes six to zero to zero. Counselor Morton? Port Security Grant. And that's attachment 13. And you can basically just, at the bottom, just move, you know, alternatives are accepted grant, when the activity ourselves are doing nothing.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we accept the port security grant. Anticipated grant total is 25,000 with no required town match.
Second.
We have a motion by Counsel Morton, and second by Counsel Barbara. Any discussion on this?
I just, I just want to say, I'm not a big fan of that poll, but I'm fine with it because we're getting 25,000, something from other sources. And I wasn't sure we needed it, but this is money coming to the town, so.
Are those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions. That passes six to zero to zero. And the last was an appointment to knowing school public gardens task force, and this is on there to nominate or put forth Heather Bond.
Summers.
Summers.
To, to fill a position on the garden task force. So I will move her
Second.
As an appointment. We have a second. Any discussion on this?
Nope.
Seeing none, are those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions. That passes six to zero to zero. The last thing was disposition of former Colonel Ledger School. We probably put that on the next.
Yeah, this is just simply, if any of you want to see any of these, but I'm not, I wasn't going to put it on a future agenda.
Okay.
Four or five times, and nobody has said they want to go to Colonel Ledger, Lucilee, Fitch Middle, and I just happened on this one to throw on the knowing community garden.
Yep.
It's the only reason it's there. If any of you, either collectively or individually want to see a tour of any of these places, let me know.
The only reason I don't need a tour is because I see Sally on it. I don't need the person to see that one.
I think we're, I think we're pretty good there. Six nines of us are good.
Six nines.
Six nines.
Or two-thirds.
But we do need to make a decision on what to do with it. Yep.
We knew. I say so.
And what to do with what?
Colonel Ledger School.
Accept it back from the city.
Well, I, I'm not really sure it's been offered to you. I think that was simply thrown out as a consideration. I think before you make a decision, you may want to take a look at.
Okay.
And I don't know.
I took that as offered.
Mayor hasn't mentioned anything to me about it recently. When I see her, I think that maybe is, I don't know what.
Okay.
I think you'd all be better off to see it before you make a decision on what you should do with it.
Well, why don't we just schedule a field trip there, then?
Right?
Yeah, I'm open any day.
I'll bring the four-by-four closer by the ground, just in case we want to screw a sign on it. Just so you know.
Apparently people are pretty punchy.
I, I'll, I'll...
If you would identify a date and time, that would be good for you. That would be great. That was the intent of putting it on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, I, personally, speaking, I mean, early in the morning or later in the afternoon is always good for me. So if we could get in there, you know, 7:30 in the morning, I'm all for it. I know that's not good for some, so.
I'd rather do early, too.
So.
You're talking about a weekend?
No, I'm talking about like a Wednesday or Thursday, or...
Oh.
Dean will be late. He can't get out of his driveway in Allen Street.
My daughter's getting on a bus. The travel's on Allen Street.
Do it before Memorial Day. I could, I mean, I could do it in the morning. I mean, I'm right down the street from it, so.
Any morning.
Can you do it any morning?
I heard that maybe on the morning, or is it?
It would have to be a Tuesday or Wednesday.
Oh, I'll just look at the windows.
So, I'll give you, we'll throw out a couple of dates for that. Don't forget that next Tuesday, we're at 6 o'clock, a meeting with the Charter Revision Commission.
Yay.
Okay?
Yes.
This is the 17th.
Any other business?
We just have to make sure.
Mark, can we make sure that Bonnie gets a copy of the...
She has everything.
She does have it?
Oh, all right.
We can just put it in a drawer, right?
Yeah.
I was making sure Debbie got it.
Yeah. All right. Does someone want to make a motion to a juror?
Move adjourned.
A juror.